All right, thank you, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for August 16, 2022. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members Asatrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasachian.
Here. And let us next have the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can ask to, please rise, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us begin by acknowledging that our city of Glendale is on the indigenous lands of the Tangva people. As government officials, we have pledged to improve the quality of life in this community and are entrusted with doing so. When we contemplate our diversity, we are reminded that although we have differences, we are linked by our common humanity and common goal of bettering our city and the planet. As Archbishop Desmond Tudor stated, my humanity is bound up in yours, or if we can only be human together. When we work together to move our city forward in a spirit of mutual respect and common decency, we showcase what is best about our community, our state, and our nation. We unite here today with this noble aim and common purpose. Let kindness, collaboration, reason, and evidence inform the discourse and deliberations at this council meeting. Let us aim to uphold and protect the life and dignity of all, keeping in mind those who are most vulnerable. Thank you.
Please. All right, may we have your report, please?
Yes, the agenda for the August 16, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on August 11, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, thank you very much. And under presentation and appointments, may we have the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, August 23, 2022.
Good evening, Mayor Kasachian, members of the City Council. Next week's meetings will start in the afternoon with the Housing Authority meeting. We only have adoption of minutes on that one. In the evening, council meeting starts at 6:00. We don't have any consent items for once, but we'll make it up on the action item side. Under 8:08 would be a report from Management Services regarding the selection of a delegate and voting alternate for the 2022 Legal California Cities Annual Conference. Management Services will also provide a report on consideration of establishing a sister-city relationship with the city of Martuni in the Republic of Artsakh. Public Works Department will provide a report on Brand Boulevard Complete Streets Demonstration Project, followed by two reports from Community Development. The first is regarding recommendations to modify and improve the zoning code and the entitlement review process. The second report will be a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $8 million for Rockhaven. And the final two reports that evening will be from the Police Department. The first regarding request to accept $1 million from the Board of State and Community Corrections, and the last one is acceptance of grant funds from the Burn Discretionary Grant Program.
All right, thank you very much. And what is next on this portion of the agenda?
It's the appointment of board and commission member introduced by Councilmember Asatrian on August 9, 2022, Sona A. Tatians Commission on the Status of Women.
Councilmember Asatrian, please.
Sona is actually here with her two brilliant daughters and her husband Alex. She's a board member of the Glendale Educational Foundation, co-founder of Exchange LA, which is a networking group for professionals in Los Angeles. She's a member of the Glendale Chapter of the National Charity League, school-side counsel parent advocate at Roseville Middle School. She has a Bachelor of Arts degree in Women's Studies, used to be a legal extern at Glendale YWCA, and she's been on the executive board of Women to Women, serving from 2010 to 2020. As many of you are aware, women's issues are very important to me particularly, and I was looking for somebody that would take a proactive role on the commission, and I believe that Sona would be able to be that voice, not just for women and girls in our community, but also for women that work in the city of Glendale. And so I'd like to request a nomination for Sona.
Nomination has been made.
Second.
One second.
Let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, congratulations. Now, Commissioner Tatians, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, sorry.
Come, please approach the podium.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I've been a resident of Glendale for 17 years. I operate my law firm here. I live here with my family, and I'm really excited to be on this commission and to work for women's rights and, you know, further women's rights in Glendale. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to your service. Next.
Appointment of board and commission member introduced by Councilmember Asatrian on August 9, 2022, Joseph Kascanian, Design Review Board.
Just a bit of background on Joseph. Mr. Kascanian is a Realtor with years of experience reviewing city ordinances and codes to ensure that projects are up to code. He also serves on the Board of the ARBU National Committee of America Western Region, Board of Directors, and is a member of the Glendale Realtors Association. I've personally known Mr. Kascanian from his days at the Armenian Youth Federation and as an active youth member in our community. I specifically selected Joseph for this commission because I wanted to ensure that my pointee to the commission brings the resident perspective onto the commission, but also has the experience and know-how of reviewing codes and making determinations based off that instead of adding subjective requirements that are technically not supposed to be done so by the Design Review Committee. So I think he will make an excellent addition to the commission, and so I'd need a second for that.
Nominations, I don't believe, require a second. So once you've made the nomination, we just confirm it. The nomination has been made. Thank you, Councilmember Asatrian. We appreciate it. Let's have a roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, congratulations. And Design Review Board Member Kascanian, as you make your way to the podium, I'd like to acknowledge the attendance of your father, former council member of the city of Gardena, Art Kascanian. Thank you for joining us.
I also see his wife, Laura, in the audience, so.
Thank you, Mayor Kasachian, Councilmember Asatrian, members of City Council, city staff. I moved to Glendale five years ago and fell in love with this city. It has always been a special place to me. Its vibrant community, history, and progress. As a Design Review member, I'll be responsible for ensuring that new construction projects fit within the character of the city, both representing its traditions and embracing its modernity. I take this job very seriously, knowing that the footprint we leave here today will be the ones that will live for generations to come. I'm very excited about this opportunity because it gives me an inside look at how the city operates while also giving back to the city, serving others by making our neighborhoods more beautiful. Our city and community is constantly changing and growing. This growth brings new opportunities, but it also comes with challenges. As a Design Review member, I will be the voice of Glendale residents, ensuring that each new construction project enhances the city and represents its traditions. I am excited to take on this challenge and continue making Glendale a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you all.
Thank you. What is next?
Next is the appointment of board and commission member introduced by Councilmember Asatrian on August 9, 2022, Marina Manukian, Community Development Block Grant.
So Ms. Manukian is a 28-year resident of Glendale, an attorney and a member of the Armenian Bar Association and part of its Domestic Violence Task Force. She's a member of Home and Land Glendale Ara Chapter and part of its Drug Prevention and Education Committee. She also serves on the Board of St. Mary's Tuft and Camp preschool and kindergarten. She's been an active community member in Glendale and is well-versed in the diverse nonprofits that enrich our jewel city. And so I think she would be a great fit in getting them the funding that they need to continue to do the great work that they do. I also see Ms. Manukian's husband, Leonard Manukian, in the audience, but I guess I don't need a second, so we're going for a vote.
None has been made. Let's have a roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Commissioner Manukian, please.
Councilmember Asatrian, Mayor Kasachian, members of the City Council. I'm deeply honored for the trust that you've placed in me to join the CDBG Advisory Board. I promise to work hard, listen, learn, and make sure that I add value to the advisory board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last item?
Appointment of board and commission member introduced by Councilmember Asatrian on August 9, 2022, Hagob Jack Mavian, Audit Committee.
Mr. Mavian is the CEO of Merlin Financial Services in Glendale. He also has a Bachelor's of Science degree in Finance, Risk Management, and Business Law from Cal Poly Pomona. I know that this position has been vacant for a long time, and I am very grateful for Mr. Mavian for offering to bring his experience to serve our city. And I'll continue on.
Thank you. Nomination has been made. Let us have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, congratulations to Commission Member Jack Mavian.
Thank you to Councilmember Ellen for consideration, to all council members and staff, Mayor Kasachian. I was born and raised in Glendale. I'm honored to serve the community that, you know, has raised me, and I will, to the best of my abilities, you know, reciprocate that to the commission of audit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. And thank you to all our board members and commissioners, those who are now joining the ranks and those who continue to serve. We rely on them heavily on a number of issues. So anyone who is interested to serve, I encourage them to go online, look at what board and commission positions we have, and if they're interested, to submit applications to be considered in the future. All right, and I know, I think you have, do you have more?
Comment?
Sure.
I've actually opened up my commission appointments to the public, and so the ones that haven't been nominated yet, which were just, you know, I've only nominated these four so far. So if you are interested in serving on a commission, please submit your application. I'm happy to meet with you and see if we can have you serve on one of our commissions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for those comments. Just in terms of housekeeping, by the way, to my colleagues, I apologize if I don't see if someone wants to jump in. I know that in the past I've overlooked someone when they've wanted to make a comment. It's not intentional. I try to both look at the audience, and even though I'm a parent, I don't have eyes all over my head. Sometimes I feel like I have them on the back of my head, but please feel free to interrupt me if you do want to jump in and make a comment. And as chair, I will acknowledge you. Next item is the consent items.
Yes, consent items including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone who wishes? Do we have any cards or callers on any of these items, Clerk Abadjan? All right, if we don't, is there one item?
Yes.
I'd like item 4C to be taken separately because I need to express an abstention.
Besides, and, yes, I don't have the numbering in front of me here, but the item 4B, the Clean California Local Grant Program, can we?
Okay, sure.
For 4C, I just have a comment, so I guess.
Okay, so 4C has been pulled off, so that will be considered separately, as well as 4B. 4C was asked to be pulled by Councilmember Najarian, so we can have separate consideration, and we'll have some comments on that. And 4B was pulled by Councilmember Brotman. That leaves us with just the minutes. So may I have a motion for 4A?
I'll move 4A.
Very second.
Let's have a roll call for that.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, can you please read 4B into the record?
Yes, Public Works Regarding Clean California Local Grant Program. One, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Public Works or His Designee to Execute a Clean California Local Grant Program. Restricted Grant Agreement with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, for the City of Glendale San Fernando Road Beautification Project. And number two is Resolution Authorizing the Director of Public Works or His Designee to Execute a Clean California Local Grant Program. Restricted Grant Agreement with the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, for the City of Glendale Preamble Alley Project.
Right, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Brotman. Councilmember, did you have a question, or would you want some clarification?
Yeah, there were two reasons I wanted to pull it. One, I think there's a lot of really interesting content there, and it would be good to just run it by the community so that they know about these three pretty exciting opportunities that we have. I wanted to, I did want to talk a little bit about the San Fernando beautification and just go over some of the things that we talked about in the briefing and raise them publicly. So maybe if you could just give a little rundown with a focus on the San Fernando beautification, and then we could talk about it.
Good evening, Mayor Kasachian and members of City Council. The item before you is a Clean California Local Grant Program. The city of Glendale applied for and received three grants. There was a total of 105, 329 applications submitted to Caltrans, of which 105 applications were granted, three of them to the city of Glendale. This is a grant to beautify and improve local streets and roads, to clean and enhance public spaces. The maximum grant amount was $5 million per application, of which we received two $5 million application grants and one $300,000 grant. One was for the San Fernando Road Beautification Project. Another grant was for improving our alley infrastructure at 38 alleys. And the final grant was a South Glendale Greening Grant, where we would be planting trees throughout South Glendale. In regards to the San Fernando Road Beautification Project, it will take place on San Fernando Road between Grandview Avenue and Elk Avenue, the middle portion of San Fernando, I like to call it. It's approximately a 1.6-mile stretch of roadway out of a total four-and-a-half-mile stretch of roadway in the city of Glendale that San Fernando encompasses. And this project will be improving the roadway infrastructure, the walking infrastructure. It will be installing stormwater retention facilities, curb extensions, bulbouts, center medians, and overall improving the corridor as a whole as it does parallel the railroad. So with that, I take any questions?
Okay, so the first one was that, it was brought to my attention that the Bicycle Transportation Plan, the 2012 Bicycle Transportation Plan called out a possible Class 1 bike facility along that corridor in the railroad right-of-way. And we were, we were, we were to talk to LA Metro and the Southern California Rail Authority to see if we could develop something there. So when I first saw this, and I was talking to somebody in the community, the question came up, do we have the real estate to the west side of San Fernando where we are doing that landscaping to put in a Class 1 bike lane or put in a bike lane at all? If you could just address the amount of right-of-way that belongs to the city of Glendale, and any thoughts on how we can possibly make progress towards that, that, you know, aspiration that we had to build a Class 1 bike lane, I guess, in the railroad right-of-way?
Absolutely. Councilmember Brotman, the city currently has a three-foot right-of-way behind the curb face up to the railroad right-of-way. And in regards to the 2012 Bicycle Transportation Plan, it does call for a Class 1 facility in the railroad right-of-way and not on San Fernando Road in the city right-of-way. So that is a detail of the right-of-way that exists currently behind the face of curb.
Okay, but we have three feet we could potentially work with one way or another.
Three feet does, that three-foot right-of-way does have a lot of infrastructure, such as traffic signals, catch basins, pull boxes, and other utilities that are city-owned. And so removing those or adjusting those will prove to be a challenge to fit in a bike lane instead of that infrastructure, as that infrastructure does service the roadway.
Okay, so then the other thing that I brought up in our discussion yesterday was the meandering sidewalk. I understand on the east side, we have, I don't know how far along the designs are, but we've at least contemplated a meandering sidewalk, right? Like an S-shaped sidewalk, which might look pretty from kind of, when you look at the plans, it might look pretty, but my understanding is that it's not really ideal from a pedestrian perspective because it's, you are, you are coming right up to the roadway, and you have more space that you could potentially widen that sidewalk. I think right now we're talking about a five-foot sidewalk, right? But we could, if we use that space differently, we could widen it. So I just wanted to kind of get that out there and get your comments on whether we could look at a different configuration there that would allow us to widen that and make that, you know, a safer, more convenient sidewalk for pedestrians.
So the meandering sidewalk, Councilmember Brotman, is conceptual in nature. We don't have any detailed design plans yet. We plan on embarking on that effort once we have our consultant onboard, but we'll definitely keep in mind the best practices if we do go ahead with a meandering sidewalk or a straight sidewalk on that eastern portion.
Okay, and I would encourage you to work with Bradley Calvert and his team because they have a good sense of what some of these best practices are to enhance walkability. And so the last thing, and then I'll be done, is just that I would encourage you also, as we're looking at this, it's a, it's a grant, you know, a large-sized grant, and we're going to do a lot of work to this roadway. What can we do to kind of further these goals that we talked about not too long ago when we talked about Vision Zero? And we know, you know, there's a strong push in the community all across the region to slow down driving speeds and make, make our roadways safer for pedestrians and bikes. So I'd really like to see if we can look holistically at any opportunity we have to get in a bike lane, to widen a sidewalk, to do other things to the roadway, maybe to the lanes that would slow traffic in that corridor and make that more, make that a safer place for all users.
Absolutely. We will do that during the design phase.
Okay, and on that, I'll move the item.
Thank you.
Unless anybody has any comments.
Councilmember Najarian?
I just want to say, if you're talking about the MetroLink right-of-way, you know, see me, so I can, I can help and push it through. Maybe this just came up recently, but.
It's been there since 2012, but.
Right-of-way?
No, no, the Bike Transportation Plan suggesting that we build a Class 1 bike lane along that right-of-way. But anyway, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, we couldn't even put bushes in that right-of-way because there was a lot of fiber and stuff, so it's, it's, anyway.
Okay. I'll second the item.
Thank you. With that, let us have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, thank you. Can you please read 4C into the record?
Yes, Community Development Regarding Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Milk for the Vertigo Wash Visioning Study. Motion Authorizing Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Milk to Increase the Maximum Cost by $75,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $515,000.
Mr. Mayor, I ask us to come out because I must recuse myself due to an interest in real estate adjacent to the wash.
Thank you. And Councilmember Asatrian, did you wish to make some comments or ask a question?
I do, I do have some comments, and I don't know which staff member is available.
Yes, Ms. Tomar Sad will be able to respond to your questions, Councilmember.
So I'm totally okay with, with the additional funds that are needed for the contract. I have serious concerns about the public engagement that was done for the Vertigo Wash. I've made it a point previously that, I believe the consultant had reported that 720 people out of the close to 200,000 people that live in Glendale had responded to the survey. I feel like this is something I keep bringing up at every meeting, and so I want to make it clear that as we are renewing this contract and they are continuing to do public engagement, that, that public engagement does not only engage people that are interested, but goes out to our diverse communities and gets impact from them. I also want to make sure that the homes and the homeowners that are impacted have separate public engagements that are going to be affected by the Vertigo Wash. And so I would just ask for my commitment, for a commitment from staff to communicate that to the consultant and make that a priority. Thank you. Be well.
All right, I would second those comments. I do think that we need to do a better job of outreach across the board. Too often I've been to these community outreach efforts where we have something in a park. I mean, I actually went to two of them for the Vertigo Wash, and I'll tell you, one in the northern part of the city where people are far more engaged. It was better attended than the one in the southern port of, part of the city in Fremont Park, which, the park was full of people, but our consultants were not approaching the people in the park. And you would think that someone needs to be proactive and go up to individuals with a clipboard and say, hey, we're doing this. That park doesn't oftentimes get folks from the city on a charrette or, you know, vision boards explaining what they're doing. And it has a very multilingual community that it serves. It would be good for them to be prepared if they're going to do outreach, so. I'm sorry? Yes, Councilmember Divine.
Thank you. And I also, and I recommended this before, but it hasn't gone very far, but I'd like to see representation on that task force or the board that's making the decisions about this wash. I'd like to see representation of the, there is a coalition up there that is very interested in this project. Whether they're pro or con, doesn't matter. They should have a seat on that board, and I'd like to see that happen.
Would one of you like to respond?
I can briefly. All the points are well-taken. Thank you, Tomar, for coming up. With respect to Councilmember Divine's most recent comment, the initial committee that was put together was more of a professional technical advisory committee. It was not the final committee that's going to be making determinations on the final outcome of this particular project. I anticipate, and I look over to our city manager here, because I'm not 100% sure exactly what the timeline of this is, but this final piece with Milk provides us with the tools we need to do the final hydrology analysis. After that, we'll be coming back to council with an update. The real stakeholder outreach on the final version of what this looks like comes next, and that will include a much larger, much more diverse, less technical group of individuals throughout the community to sit on.
Well, I'd like to make sure that Patrick Murphy is on that committee. Thank you.
I echo that sentiment, and we've had many conversations with Mr. Murphy. Hopefully he or a designee from the organization and groups that he represents would have a voice. Thank you. Is there, with no other further questions or comments, and taking into consideration council's comments regarding outreach and participation, may I have a motion on this item?
Move it.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Asatrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Kasachian.
Yes, thank you very much. Next is City Council and Staff Comments. Who would like to speak first? Anyone? All right, if there are, is no one who wishes to speak?
Right, I will.
I was gonna go to you.
Okay.
Okay.
First of all, today, we have
First of all, today we had the groundbreaking for Harrow Village. We were all there, and it's our affordable housing project for seniors. It was quite exciting. A boat is going to be doing the build, and it's in the beautiful Tobin World Facility, so it's adaptive reuse of a historic site, so it's going to be a fantastic development. I have a few announcements for events that are coming up. On August 28th, that's coming up pretty soon, Adams Hill Art Festival is going to be held from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Mini Park, and I know Stephen Meeks is here, my appointment to the Commission on Parks, and he has a big, big role in that art festival. So I want to make sure that everybody knows ahead of time, so start marking your calendars, okay? That's August 28th. On September 25th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Elks Lodge, there is going to be an event called Touch a Truck. And, yeah, and it's on Sunday, September 25th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00, and it's hosted by our Glendale Police Department, and I'm sure you're going to be hearing more about this in the future, in partnership with the American Cancer Society. There will be a pancake breakfast, and all the funds raised will go directly to the American Cancer Society. Information will be provided to our residents, including resources and screenings. So this can be a very, very valuable festival for everyone. If you want information on volunteering or information about the event, just call 818-548-4015. The next event is also going to be fun, and this is kind of a throwback to when we had a very active Glendale Beautiful, or Clean and Beautiful program, where we used to have a day where we sent people out in the city and we cleaned up our streets. Well, Sunrise Rotary is, has formed a group led by Rita Bucuzzi, and we are going to have a Community Connection Cleanup Service Day on, where is it, October the 8th, and we're going to meet at Pacific Park. And I don't, sorry, I didn't write down the times, but we'll have more information on these, but I just want you to mark your calendars. The goal is to build unity in the community, and we're going to be cleaning up of all places the San Fernando corridor. Now, I questioned that. I said, well, wait a second, if we're going to be cleaning up this corridor, what about all this work that we're talking about? But the work that we're speaking of from the grant is not going to happen for a long time, so this is going to be on October the 8th. Besides the groups cleaning the different sections of San Fernando, there is, there are also going to be two booths, one for mental health resources, which I think is very important, especially since we're asking teens to volunteer to help clean up the community. So we'll have mental health specialists there. And there's also going to be a food pantry collection booth, and all the food will be donated to, if I get this right, Catholic Charities, Salvation Army, and what's the third one? Does anybody remember what the third one is? The third one, it's very, it's, oh, Y. YWSCA? I'm not sure. I can't remember, but there's three of our, and it'll come to me eventually. I didn't write it down. So if you're interested in volunteering out there, and I've already contacted a student from G U, Glendale High School, and she's all excited about it, she's going to take it to her, her student council and get kids to volunteer. So high school students, you will get volunteer credit or civil, civic service credit, whatever they call it these days, and it'll be a fun day for everybody. And it's not all day, it's only like from 9:00 to 1:00 or 9:00 to noon or something, so you don't have to worry about being out in the streets for, you know, all day long. Okay, so those are those, those announcements. I would like to ask for a report on the revision of the historic district process that is supposed to be completed and soon, and I understand that it's been over a year and a half since we last spoke about this, and some possible historic district applicants are waiting because they're being told, well, we're revising the, the process. And so I'd like to, you know, find out when that's coming to us. And an update, there was also a brochure, as I understand, outlining the benefits and responsibilities of homeowners in historic districts, and I think that would be a really great resource. So I'm just asking for an update so that everyone knows that, yes, staff is working on it, and yes, it's coming. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, Councilmember Devine, thank you for bringing these two items to our attention. The streamlining process, the revisions, as you noted, is scheduled to go to HPC on September 15th, and subsequently will come to, in front of few city councils sometime in October. We'll have to fix that date with the mayor. As for the brochure, you are correct, it's been in the works for a while. It's taken longer than we had hoped for, but it's going to the print shop, to our graphics department next week, and they will print a large number of copies that will go to every property owner in every designated district and will be available for, to HOAs, to property owners, to potential districts for information that will provide instruction as to how to go about nominating the districts. So we are hoping for that also to go out in the mail sometime in October, if not late September.
Okay, that's good news, because I understand that's been longer than a year and a half. Okay, my last, my last request, and on this one, I'll need a, a second from one of my colleagues. Last week, there was a discussion about unpermitted work being done in the city. Residents, along with myself, and I think some of my fellow council members are, are kind of fed up with the impunity by which this is being done in our community and our neighborhoods. So I'd like to request a couple of things from staff in a staff report. Recommendations on increasing the punitive damages that are now being assessed. I think that we need to be a little tougher. You know, I think we're past the point of do it and then ask forgiveness. I think we have to hit these people in the pocketbook and perhaps, boy, that's an old, old saying, in the purse. But anyway, I think we need to, to be a little bit more, I don't want to say draconian, but I think that's what I'm aiming for on these unpermitted projects. Also, I'd like a staff report on the speed with which, or they are addressed, and how we can speed up the process. You know, what do we need to do? What does staff need to do when they get a, you know, these are all complaint-driven. That means that all of you call in and say, my neighbor is chopping down, I'm tempted to do this, because I've been listening to these people cut down trees for five days now, and I'm wondering, are they cutting down trees that they shouldn't be cutting down? Do they have, do they need permits to cut down all of these trees? But these are complaint-driven, and what's been happening is that by the time our inspectors get to the properties, the work's already done. It's too late to stop it. So I would like to see a process by which our inspectors get out there, these issues, these unpermitted complaints are expedited. Put them at the top of the list and don't just put them on the desk. And I, I know it's difficult, and I know we're down, we're short inspectors, but please, I'm asking that you come up with some sort of a plan to expedite these, these unpermitted projects. Then comes to another issue of the seen and the unseen, unpermitted work, okay? So we can see when trees are being cut down. We can see when the windows are not by code. What we cannot see is insulation. We cannot see, this is when the job is done, we cannot see like that, and I was thinking of that patio deck, we cannot see, are the, are the caissons or whatever they put into the hillside, are they safe? Were they done correctly? Were they done by code? You know, and talk about draconian, it would be draconian to ask them to pull all of that out. But the thing is, we have to get to these, these jobs, these projects before this is done. We really have to ensure that, that our residents are safe and that, that we are responding to these, these calls of complaint and help. And we have to make sure that everything is inspected properly and installed properly, the seen and the unseen. I understand that we don't go into walls, and that's why we get, you know, so what happens with the plumbing and with the electricians and all of that?
Councilmember Devine, for the interest of time, can I ask you to please keep your comments a little brief in? If there is a direction, please.
Sure. That's my direction. So that's, that's what I'd like for you to, to look at, so I'm asking for a second on that report.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. And do you wish to make a request for an adjournment or?
No, I thought you were gonna do that.
Thank you. Any of my other colleagues wish to make any comments? Councilmember Brotman and then Councilmember Najarian?
Keep it brief.
Yeah, I will. So two things. One, this is not a new issue, but I know that when people bring e-waste, when people want to recycle e-waste, you know, they bring it down to, I guess, our facility there on Colorado, or is it, no, on Chevy Chase, right? And they're charged, and it's not a small charge. I know a friend just texted me, and she brought a bunch of stuff down, and was told she would have to pay $50 to recycle the e-waste. And I know it costs us. On the other hand, I mean, it costs us when we're passing on the cost, but on the other hand, it's going to discourage a lot of people from bringing in e-waste. So I would like staff to look at that. Is there any way we can do something different? And, and maybe we have this, but I know in the past, there've been, you know, like Bring Your E-Waste in Day, like once a year, twice a year, or something like that, where it's free, and maybe that's a way to do it. So anyway, that's, now, related to that is kind of an interesting thing, I know I've talked to staff about a little, is setting up a, something called a fix-it clinic, or it's also sometimes called a repair cafe. A lot of cities have these. I've been to one in Pasadena, I don't know if they still have it, but what, it was in a church, and basically, a bunch of volunteers go in who like to fix things, and they sit there, and then people come, and they bring in their toasters, and they bring in their clocks, and they bring in whatever, and, you know, that are broken, that would otherwise get thrown in the trash can, and people will fix them. And I kind of had forgotten about it, but my daughter texted me the other day, she had a, a broken clock, and they had one where she lives in Toronto, and she brought it in, they fixed it. She said it felt so great not to have to throw that clock in the trash. So I was just wondering if staff could maybe take a look at how we might go about getting something like that set up. It's kind of a community activity, it's not something, I guess, we would run, but maybe there's a way we can, we can find a space and get some people to do that.
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, Councilmember Brotman, as a matter of fact, and you are correct, we have had a conversation about this a while ago, and I had brought it to our sustainability officers' attention, and Mr. Jones is aware of it. It's on his list of things to do as he's gearing up to, he's hired an intern, so that that should be able, she should be able to help out, and, but this is on his radar, and he, he knows that he needs to set something up. And it will, and we have also talked about maybe include it in a community event as well.
Okay, and I don't need a second for that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Najarian.
So I just have a few, I'll try to be brief. Did I tell you guys my Pete Buttigieg story already?
No.
No? Okay, so, so last month, I had the pleasure of meeting the Secretary of Transportation, Mayor Pete Buttigieg. He was helping dedicate a station for the K Line, which is the last step before reaching LAX. It's part of the metro system, so soon, and I believe it's going to be in 2023, in about a year, you're going to be able to take transit from Glendale all the way to your terminal at LAX. And Pete Buttigieg was there. He was very happy, and I kidded him that he got all the way up to a presidential candidacy coming from a city much smaller and less diverse and less urban and less environmentally conscious than the city of Glendale. And he didn't know what to say when I told him that. He said, he said, okay, next. The, the other item that was very exciting was last Tuesday, I was not at the council meeting, but I had a good excuse, I was throwing out the first pitch at Dodger Stadium. And, and I was, I was representing Metro at that point, and in particular, promoting the Dodger Stadium Express, which is by far the best way to get to Dodger Stadium. You can take transit from Glendale to Union Station. It's, it's a $2 trip to Union Station. The shuttle from Union Station to the Dodger game is free. It'll bring you back to Union Station, and you can return on the MetroLink trains. So that was a lot of fun. There's some dispute whether I was 60 feet, 6 inches away from the plate, but anyway, that was, that was a lot of fun, and I was happy to represent the city of Glendale. This morning, I was with the Federal Railroad Administrator from Washington, D.C. He came in to look at our MetroLink system, and we talked about, believe it or not, some of the changes and grade steps that we were going to make along the corridor from Union Station up to the Hollywood Burbank Airport, including safety detections for pedestrians, for bicyclists who need to cross over, and we will be trying very hard to increase the funding we get from the Federal Railroad Administration to increase the service and the safety, as well as the entire LA Union Station flow-through. It's called Link US, where you will be able to flow straight through Union Station instead of dead-ending and then backing up and going down. And the last thing I want to ask about is, I'm getting, it's kind of along the lines of what Ms. Devine was talking about, I'm getting a lot of complaints about this G Lounge, and it's not just parking, it's not just using parking for seating. There's late-night parties, there's fights that are breaking out, violations of the CUP. We've all got the letters, the emails. I just want to know where we're going with that thing, because I keep getting these letters, so.
And that was all because of unpermitted work that was done?
I don't know exactly why, but if you could update us on what's going on, it's another code enfor, I mean, it's a code enforcement issue as our homes, as our cutting down trees, as our doing a lot of things in the city, putting up windows illegally, but if you could please address that to us, online or offline, is, is fine.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Najarian. Would you like to respond now, or would you?
I can briefly, Mayor, in the interest of time. Mayor Kasakian, Member of City Council, as Councilmember Najarian mentioned, there are a number of code violations that started as a result of, as you recall, during the pandemic, there, there was a ban on indoor dining, and as a result, this particular restaurant owner and a couple of other restaurant owners, we allowed them to utilize their surface parking lot for, to provide services to their customers, and as part of, during that process, they have implemented and, and built some unpermitted work and structure. We are working with them. We are trying to get compliance as much as we can. There are certain items that we cannot, by any stretch of imagination, and we've tried to not be permitted, but the city, it's in the city attorney's office, they have a case. We are planning to meet with the restaurant owner and his attorney, believe, hoping sometime next week or the following week, and after that, we'll be able to provide a more detailed report as to the steps we're going to take moving forward.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Asatian.
So I have a couple of things. I attended the Independent Cities Conference this weekend with City Manager Galanian. There were a lot of interesting topics covered, from clean energy to public safety, to water, and actually SB9, and what we can do to preserve some of our neighborhoods, and the panel discussion was actually covered by the attorneys that were representing the cities that are suing for SB9. I was actually surprised at how much work Lancaster is doing with respect to clean energy, and if there's an opportunity for our staff to speak to them, to, to see some of these out-of-the-box things that they're doing, I think that would be a wonderful idea. things that they're doing, I think that would be a wonderful idea. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Kulanyan, to that?
Yes, definitely, Councilmember Asatirian. Yes, some of these, the sessions were quite beneficial as far as the city of Lancaster is concerned. They, they, they have a unique opportunity because they're on flatlands and they have plenty of open space, but we will definitely, I have, I know the city manager up there, definitely make contact with them and there is, if there is any opportunities for collaboration and even learning and best practices from them.
I would like to take a moment to address Councilmember Devine. I'm in no shape or form condoning the behavior of people that do unpermitted work. I wholeheartedly support your motion, but referring to our residents as these people time and again, I would appreciate if we can, moving forward, be more respectful towards our residents. And then lastly, several days ago, there was an explosion at the Surmado Trade Center in Armenia. As the latest report, 16 victims have tragically lost their lives. Two are missing and 61 are injured. Armenia has declared August 17 and 18 days of mourning. All the while, the ceasefire agreements were broken by Azerbaijan. And as we gather here tonight, the people of Agavno and Berzor villages are packing their lives and being forced out of their ancestral lands and their homes. They've been given until August 25th to evacuate. This is happening as our government continues to use US tax dollars to provide aid to Azerbaijan and Turkey, which have yet to be held accountable for the war crimes committed in 2020, which are ongoing today. I'd like to request that we adjourn the meeting in memory of the victims and in keeping the people of Armenia and Artsakh in our thoughts if possible.
Thank you.
And the, well, first of all, let me start off with the explosion in Yerevan and the Surmalu market. I found out about that on Sunday and our thoughts and prayers are obviously with those who have been affected by this tragedy. I have reached out, I did reach out to the acting or deputy consul general here and expressed to her my condolences and asked that those condolences, our collective condolences, be conveyed to the mayor of the city of Yerevan, as well as having contacted our acting fire chief, Brooks, Jeff Brooks, as well as our city manager and asking that if there is an investigation as to the cause of the explosion that was in a fireworks factory, but we have tremendous experience here in the Los Angeles County that we could offer. We have offered it in the past in terms of first responder assistance and training that for us to find ways, if there is ways to collaborate and help them as they try to make their way through this tragedy and find out what happened to it, for us to offer that as well. So thank you. And our, again, thoughts and prayers to the people affected by this terrible accident. Last of the concerts in the park was held this last week. Truly amazing to see how many people attended this. Can't wait for next summer. Already, it's sad to see the concerts end, but as one thing ends, another begins. And with that, again, I wish to, I wish all of the families who are sending off their children to school tomorrow, safe and happy and successful academic year. Most importantly, please take your time tomorrow. Get out of the house early. Be careful when you're driving. Drivers of Glendale, be careful because there will be schoolchildren walking to school. So take extra care tomorrow. Let's make sure that's a safe and successful day and academic year. Again, the Harrows Village Housing Project opening. Thank you Housing Authority Chair Dan Brotman for your comments at that event. Very well attended. It's very exciting to see the work that we're doing. Regardless of what you hear or read in the newspapers, especially an article in the LA Times, we assure you that Glendale is doing its part in providing, or government at least is doing its part or all we can, to provide affordable housing in Glendale. And lastly, there was a pageant. I have never been to a pageant before, but I was invited to the Miss Philippines USA Pageant, which was held at the Alex Theater. I didn't know what to expect, but after attending it, I will say that it was very impressive to see these young women demonstrate tremendous pride in their culture and in their heritage, making all of us proud, especially the people in Glendale who trace their roots back to the Philippines with the costumes and the cultural dances and the songs. It was very, very impressive and very well attended. So thank you to those organizers and to everyone who came out for that. Lastly, unfortunately, on another sad note, along with the victims of the explosion in Armenia, I wish to ask that we adjourn in memory of Shirak Hojyan. Shirak Hojyan was an Armenian born in Iraq in 1943. He leaves behind his wife, our beloved and dear friend Commissioner Seda Hojyan, two sons and three grandchildren. He had a full life, unfortunately. He passed away this past Saturday at the age of 79 after years of dialysis due to kidney disease. Shirak started working as film editor at 17 years, as a film editor, starting at 17 years old. He began by training under French artists who were in Baghdad filming several films. Afterwards, his late father Suren and uncle Hamas bought film equipment and established their own film production studio. Shirak gradually turned to directing local films plus honing and expertise in editing, sound engineering and filming. Meanwhile, he earned a bachelor's degree in economics and political science from Baghdad University. But it was his film production work that was his passion. Before leaving Iraq, he had ascended to the position of general manager of cinema for Iraqi state television. In 1976, he and his wife Seda Hojyan and young children Sean and Richard, three in one at the time, escaped the newly formed regime and immigrated to the United States. He and his family became proud US citizens in the early 1980s. The Hojyan family wasn't as eternally grateful to the United States and Glendale specifically for welcoming them with open arms. In 79, a few years after arriving in the United States, Shirak partnered with Sarkeh Muradyan to create Armenian Teletime, the first Armenian-language television station in the United States. He also continues his film production work while working for local editor. A film producer, the late Charles B. Pierce, discovered Shirak's talent and hired him immediately as his film editor. Soon they became friends. Shirak worked for him as his film editor, sound editor, cinematographer and director of photography in several films, including The Evictors, The Legend of Bogey Creek 2, The Norseman, Sacred Ground, and The Legend of Alfred Packer. Traveling for filmmaking was difficult on his family, so Shirak embarked on working in more steady local businesses. He partnered with his friends and opened up gas stations. He owned and operated five gas stations at the height of that career. However, Shirak remained true to his artistic side. In 2010 and 2015, he traveled to Armenia and produced two documentaries, Haragil, The White Stork, and The Apricot, The Blessed Tree of Armenia. He loved traveling to Armenia with his wife and to their second home there. Shirak was wise, had a great sense of humor, always supportive of his family, extended family and friends. His wife Seda has been recognized as a jewel of Glendale. Sean Hojyan is a federal criminal defense attorney and Richard Hojyan is a produce, production engineer and project manager. Shirak leaves behind his loving family and three grandchildren, Lilian, Michael and Daniela, and God bless his soul. His passing leaves a vast void in all of our lives.
And if I may?
Yes.
Shirak was a wonderful man, wonderful father, husband, grandfather. He did love film, talked about it all the time, but he was a great supporter of Seda, his wife, in all the projects. She's like a little Energizer bunny, but he was very supportive of her. My deepest condolences to his family and may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will adjourn in his memory and the memories of the victims of the explosion this evening. Thank you. With that, with this portion of the, unless staff has comments, all right, we will move on to community event announcements. This is a portion reserved for members of the community who wish to speak for three minutes. And if you've submitted a card, I have it here, I will call your name out. Please come up and say a few words. Anita Dominguez of the American Diabetes Association. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'm so short. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and members of the city council. My name is Anita Dominguez and I'm the executive director for the American Diabetes Association. It's an absolute honor and pleasure to be here this evening. I had the privilege to work with the city council and many city staff many, many years ago to bring American Cancer Society here and I'm glad to see it still going strong. My mom's a three-time survivor. I was born and raised in Glendale and she had cancer. Beat that and then last December, we almost lost her to diabetes. She removed her stomach from cancer and became diabetic through that procedure. Diabetes is a silent killer. Currently, 37 million children and adults in our country are battling diabetes. 96 million have prediabetes and 55% of Californians, adult Californians are actually prediabetic already. It's definitely something that's not always talked about, but it's so important. And through my work at American Diabetes, I realized that even Councilmember Najarian and the city were involved in 2019 in our Tour de Cure event that was at Glendale College. And I was like, they are amazing. We have to have them back. And so we're here to invite you back. We're here to invite the city to participate and really make an impact. Having worked for local government, I know that the city is the core of the community and together, when we work closely, we can really make an impact on those suffering from disease. I have with me, flanked, I have some amazing volunteers affected by the disease. I have Chris, who wants to say a few words. She's our director of development and she's overseeing the Step Out Walk coming in September that we would like for you to participate. Thank you. Chris?
Hello. I know I'm really short on time, but thank you all for having us and I think there's papers coming around. Our event this year is going to be at Griffith Park near the merry-go-round. It will be a step-out event. There will be a sideline tour going on for anybody who is a diehard cyclist, so that is an option, but we're just so glad to be back in person. My mom has diabetes, my grandmother has diabetes, it runs in a lot of families. I had no idea it hit as many people as it did until I started working here. So I hope we see you all September 17th. There will be more stuff in the back for anybody who is also in the community who is interested in learning more. There will be some more information in the back and I have a couple of very cool volunteers here with me too.
My name is Emily James. My grandfather died of diabetes and I'm prediabetic.
My name is Asia Evans and I have several family members battling diabetes.
Hello. My name is Sarah Steggers and I've been living with type 1 diabetes for 10 years.
Thank you so much for your time and have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, your courage and your activism. Ramella? Thank you. And following Ramella will be Nancy McLaughlin.
Good evening, councilmembers. So today, I saw an interview with one of those artists, interview with one of those reporters from those, one of those channels. And it was, they asked already that why the rents are high in Glendale. And he answered that, oh, the city of Glendale is a very nice place, so everybody wants to move in, so that's why the rents are high. So what's going to be, what's your answer to my question that, I've been living in the city of Glendale for 30 years. My husband died six months ago, so it's hard for me to afford housing in the city. And just, what is the answer to me? That what I'm supposed to do? And what, should I suppose to, I'm supposed to move to city of San Bernardo? Do you know where the lowest rents are in the Southern California? Or should I move to Bakersfield? They're $1,000. The rents are there, $1,000. So what are your answer to me? And the next thing, I want to mention that I'm not here to, to make a concession for me, like to secure a job for my daughter in the city of Glendale. And another thing is about, about the $300. We applied for the $300 and you denied us. My husband died, I mean, he was like 65 and he died and you denied the $300. You should have tossed the $300 in front of me so, so that you don't see my face here in your meetings.
All right. Thank you. Nancy McLaughlin.
Hello. Thank you for having us.
Hi. My name's Gabriel. This is Nancy. I'm, we're here today to advocate for the use of pool rental services in the city of Glendale. I'm here on behalf of my neighbor Nancy. I'm an avid swimmer. I rented her pool this last few summers during the scorching summer days. But this summer, we were told we weren't allowed to use pool rental services in the city anymore. I have a little baby, one-year-old child. I am trying to teach her how to swim. She's adorable. Nancy's home and pool is perfect for her. It's a heated saltwater pool. It's kept warm year-round. It's wonderful. It's just perfect for babies and it's, that kind of service is not available in municipal pools in the city. So I would like to encourage you guys to please look at short-term rental regulations, specifically amenities rentals by the hour. It's clear the city does allow for short-term rental homes and guests can enjoy the facilities and amenities already, but homeowners are being told that they want to rent their amenities directly. They're in a different category, but they're very, very similar. They're sharing their homes with people. Extra income helps cover the rising costs of living. It does not restrict housing stock. It does not attract transient populations. I think it's a win-win for, for pool lovers like myself, for homeowners and for the city.
I agree. And I'm speaking specifically for Swimply. My name is Nancy McLaughlin. I have lived in Glendale for 36 years and I've raised two productive citizens that have moved on. I am recently divorced and I get no spousal support. I tell you that only. That's how I heard about Swimply. I have this gorgeous pool, this gorgeous thing, and I heard it was a good way to make extra income. So I came down to the city and I was told through my home-sharing license that it would be absolutely fine to do. So I started doing it and for a couple of months, it was incredible. I got to bless families that, it was so, it was last year, so people were still staying away from pools, people that had apartments. And I got to bless so many people. I got so many people that were coming from injuries. Just for, one woman specifically, she could only exercise in a pool. Personally, I now have to have hip surgery. I can't keep my pool heated because I can't afford it. This is the first month in 36 years that I can't make my ends meet. Last year, because of Swimply, everything worked perfectly. And I really want to advocate for it. I see, I do not throw parties. I will take any kind of restrictions you want. And also there's a million dollars' worth of insurance. I have, I started letting like dear friends, well, Bakam, he's Bakam, a dear friend, use my pool. And then I'm hearing, Nancy, you got to stop that. You don't have insurance for that. You don't have this for that, you know? So it's just gotten way out of hand. So just saying, we really appreciate you. Is there anything you want to say?
Can I make a comment?
One moment. Is that, was that all? Thank you. Go ahead. What's your comment?
I actually, others have approached me on this issue. And is this an appropriate time for me to ask for us to re, to review the?
Well, I would like, let me, let's just get through all the comments and then afterwards, if any of my colleagues have questions, they can ask them. And I'm sure there'll be a few that may want to ask staff questions as well. So don't go far. Let's just go to, the next person, I think, maybe on the same matter is Gabriel? That's you?
That's me.
All right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Did you wish to, you combined your comment. I'm assuming you don't have anything else to add?
Yeah, actually, well, if you wanted to, we didn't like push it to questions or?
Yeah, just don't go far. We'll, we'll get to you.
We'll save some time.
All right. Next is Naya and Maya. These are two young women that I met at my coffee hours up in Montrose this last Friday. I'm glad you're now here at City Hall. Tell us what great idea that you are working on.
So, hi, my name is Naya Rotherman.
My name is Maya Fregaro.
And we are here today to propose the idea of creating a sign at Rock Haven for the historical value and also for our silver award. It would, it would have historical information and as well as, I have already found someone who is local to Montrose. He's been making signs for 20 years, who can make the sign for us. And Maya?
We would like to add a QR code on our sign to lead it to Rock Haven's website and show how you can support and donate to Rock, to Rock Haven, as well as adding a little plaque on the bottom of our sign with our names in Troop 1051.
So we can support the girl.
He's been making signs for 20 years. He can make the sign for us. And Maya?
We would like to add a QR code on our sign to lead it to Rock Haven's website and show how you can support and donate to Rock Haven, as well as adding a little plaque on the bottom of our sign with our names in Troop 1051.
So we can support the Girl Scouts. We have many options to fundraise for the sign, so costs would not be too much of a worry. And our second idea, we would like to stick with our first idea, but our second idea would be a bulletin board that has information about the parks and surrounding areas, as well as some information about Rock Haven. And Mayor, you came up with possibly a brass or bronze sign that would have a longer-lasting effect. But I think that's about it, yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nia, Maya from Troop 1051. I appreciated you coming to the office hours with the suggestion. I like the idea. I would like to see if any of my colleagues would like to second it, and perhaps we can recommend it to parks to look into. In the meantime, as we wait for Rock Haven to take form and what we envisioned for it within museum and other uses, we can, there's nothing to stop us from putting an informative sign over there as there are in other parts of Montrose that are interesting places.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not saying the process will move faster if you gave us Thin Mints or some of those, but it wouldn't hurt. And those s'mores cookies. All right.
Thank you.
Hint him. All right. Good luck. So we had received a second for that. Now, Councilmember Asatryan, you want to address the issue from our residents who came to speak about Swimply?
Maybe this is something for our city attorney. My understanding is that the current law allows for Airbnb and doesn't specify that people can't rent out their pools. And that we've responded back to them, noting that even though it doesn't specify, they can't actually do it. So what would be the necessary steps for us to take as a council to visit this issue?
Councilmember Asatryan, we would need a council member to raise the issue, to revisit the code, and get a second, and then staff would bring back a report. Just so, with respect to short-term rentals, we don't allow rental of a vacation rental of an entire house. We allow the rental of a room, one or more rooms within facilities, as long as the owner is present. This particular activity doesn't, it's an hour-by-hour rental service, so it's not permitted. It would be deemed a commercial service, and also doesn't qualify, as the speaker noted, for a home occupation permit. So in order for us to, for the rule to be changed, council would need to initiate a co-change, and we would need to bring that back.
Okay. Thank you so much. And by the way, I'd love, I'd love the bulletin idea at Rock Haven. Thanks for coming today.
All right. And then lastly, there was, I did want to respond to Ms. Ramela. I unfortunately don't have an answer for you in comparison. All right. Thank you for coming. With that, let us move on. Do any of my colleagues have any other comments or questions based on what they heard from the speakers? Okay. If there isn't, then let's move on to the next item.
The next are action items. Action Item A, Public Works Regarding Glendale Beeline Participation in Metro Student Fairness System Initiative Pilot Program Known as GO-PASS. Motion authorizing Glendale Beeline to accept Metro's K-14 GO-PASS during Metro's Fairness System Initiative Pilot ending June 30, 2023.
All right. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this is a great program that Metro started. It's a pilot program. It was a two-year period, and we are requesting participation of our beeline services in this program. I'll turn it over to Mr. Golanian, Director of Public Works, to provide additional details.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. This is indeed a great program that was started by Metro, and we are very happy that we are able to offer it to both GUSD and GCC students. Currently, the GCC has taken us up on this recommendation and are willing to participate in the program. We're still continuing our discussions with GUSD members to see if that, we can bring them also into the program. But the program basically operates in terms of providing these free GO-Passes to all the students within the GCC program. They can write for free, and we will get some reimbursement from Metro. There is a funding gap of $87,000, but we will be able to offset that through our ARPA funds. And so it is our recommendation to accept the Metro Student GO-Pass and move forward with this. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I think this is a great idea. I'm looking forward to it being implemented. Obviously, anything that lowers the fares for our students would be fantastic, and we'll be working with some great partners. Do any of my colleagues have questions or comments?
One question, if I may. Do you have any idea how many, what it would cost for the GUSD students to be part of this program?
Yes. Councilmember Divine, it's, there's estimated 25,000 students. At $3 per student is 75,000 that they would have to contribute to start this program.
Okay. Well, I think it's great. I think it's great.
All right. Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah, so we worked on this a few years ago. The point is to have the schools buy in, and every student in, that's attending, regardless of their need, would get this free pass, which wouldn't only work on the beeline, but on all the metro systems, the buses, the subways, and all that. So it's really good. I hope GUSD would subscribe to this. And in terms of the funding shortfall, some cities have sought sponsorships by large companies to make that funding gap. This year, we've got ARPA funds, but in case we get into a short pinch, let's say, for the gap, I think we can go to some companies, and larger companies, of course, for some contribution to do their part. We want kids on the buses. We want them out of their cars, out of mom and dad's car, and, you know, it's all about mobility. So I support it as well. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments?
The item.
All right. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. We have the roll call.
Councilmembers Asatyan?
Yes.
Rothman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakhian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move on to A B.
The next item is Action Item B, City Manager, Regarding Consideration of a Resolution Establishing Goals for Solar Energy Storage Installations and Clean Energy Targets. Resolution Establishing Goals for Solar Energy Installations by Glendale Water and Power Customers and Clean Energy Targets, Establishing a City Council Subcommittee and Directing Staff to Take Actions and Furtherance Thereof. We have a number of speakers on this item.
All right. Thank you.
We have five speaker cards, and currently, we have five people online.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll turn it over now to staff. City Manager Golanian?
Mr. Mayor Kasakhian, Member of City Council. It was a few weeks ago that you, Mr. Mayor, requested that this resolution be brought to council for consideration. There are a large number of items contained in these resolutions, and staff have completed their review and will provide some edits to make those items more palatable, more workable, more practical. And with some, some would require additional research before we are able to recommend implementation. With that, I will turn it to Ms. Godinez, our Principal Assistant City Attorney, to present the item.
Thank you, Mr. Golanian. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this resolution that was proposed a while back by the mayor is attached as Exhibit 1 to the council item. And then staff went through and did a proposed revision to certain items in the report. I just want to quickly touch on, in general, what some of those proposed revisions are. Of course, it's ultimately up to council what you'd like the final resolution to say. So one of the key items was going through the recitals in the resolution. And I should note that, I believe, online, there is a strikeout, underlined version, so that if anyone wanted to compare the original to what the changes are, that that's available to look at. So the first item was to go through the recitals and just make sure that it provided a full history and background on Glendale Water and Power and the city of Glendale's long history with regard to clean energy and how well, in fact, the city is actually doing, including its remarkable Integrated Resource Plan that was adopted and its power content label, both of which are, as I said, remarkable in terms of where we stand relative to other utilities in the state. Certain wherestases in the original resolution, the facts couldn't be verified, so they were modified just to include what could be supported based on facts that were found. For example, the amount of customers in the city of Glendale that have clean energy, the percentage relative to our overall number of customers, that is 2.5%. And the numbers of percentages of other entities and statewide can be verified, so that was taken out. We also added a reference to the amount of megawatts of solar relative to the overall peak load that Glendale has as another relevant metric in terms of how well we are doing. In terms of the operating recitals, we tried to add or suggest for council that you might want to have a little bit of flexibility in terms of a statement of "we shall adopt a policy" versus "we intend to adopt a policy", just to give yourselves a little bit of room to consider and explore in terms of reliability, in terms of cost, in terms of feasibility, as you explore the items that you want to adopt. So the seven operating clauses would essentially establish a policy to maximize the use of clean and renewable energy, to invest in the maximum extent possible in equipment and infrastructure to serve clean energy, and to establish an intent to achieve 100% clean energy by no later than 2035. And by the way, there's a discussion that we had about clean energy versus zero-carbon energy versus renewable energy versus non-carbon emitting energy. I think, you know, words matter, and these are precise terms that you're going to want to think carefully about what you adopt in the resolution, and I'll get into that in a second. The other operating clauses would set a policy in practice to reach 10% GWP customers with solar and energy storage systems by 2027, and develop additional demand management measures with a minimum total peak dispatchable and peak load-reducing capacity of 100 megawatts. Develop a plan to implement that goal, and retain consultants to develop that plan, calculate the dispatchable capacity and demand reduction, and analyze the costs and benefits of that plan. And then to form a council subcommittee to ensure progress and to be involved, essentially, in identifying the consulting, reviewing the scope of work, and providing input regarding that plan. There's an attachment to the resolution which provides some specifics as to what that plan shall include. So there, again, in the staff version, we tried to provide a little bit of flexibility to evaluate and weigh what would be in that plan and to give that committee or that consultant some flexibility to evaluate it. There is also an added suggestion to consider reliability as part of that evaluation. So with regard to the distinction between clean and renewable and zero-carbon and non-carbon emitting resources, so on this very brief PowerPoint of a few slides I've put together, eligible renewable energy resources under California law is defined very specifically as these listed things. There's not only the state law, but there's regulations and a book of requirements that utilities like Glendale have to follow for each of these to determine whether we're following the guidelines so that they are, in fact, eligible and they can be counted towards our RPS. So the ones in bold are renewable energy resources that we have in our portfolio currently. With the exception of biomethane, that would be the proposed renewable biogas project. That would count as a biomethane project. So those are the eligible renewable energy resources in our portfolio. If I could have the next slide. So renewable is a subset of zero-carbon. And so what the state law, the SB 100 law, says is that it's a state goal that by 2045, we need to have 100% of the energy served to retail customers should be zero-carbon and eligible renewable energy resources. So of, you know, 60% of it has to be renewable, but 100% of it has to be zero-carbon. So things like large hydroelectric, like Hoover, and nuclear energy, like the energy we get from Palo Verde, those count as zero-carbon, but those are not renewable. Renewable would be small hydro, solar, wind, geothermal, biomass, and biomethane. So that's the distinction. This overall is what you can provide under SB 100. Next slide, please. So non-carbon emitting, some non-carbon emitting resources are renewable and some are not. So renewable is a larger category than non-carbon emitting, right? So the only ones that would count as renewable and non-carbon emitting, which is what was in the original resolution, is the proposal for 100% of Glendale's energy by 2035, would be small hydro, solar, and wind. That would mean that you could no longer serve energy from, for example, Hoover, Palo Verde, the geothermal project that we recently signed a 25-year deal for. None of those would be able to be counted, or you couldn't, you could no longer supply with those resources. Next slide, please. This is a little hard to read. I apologize. It's kind of small. This is our most recently reported power content label. And of the resources that we have, and mind you, the power content label is not a precise fit with RPS. There's slight differences, but they're very close. So if you were to look, and frankly, I should have my glasses on because I can't see it that well, but many of our resources would no longer be eligible under a requirement that you have everything be clean, non-carbon emitting, renewable. So if it's, you know, maybe you want to use the word "or" in your resolution, or maybe you just want to leave it at broader clean energy, or maybe you want to default to the SB 100 standard, which is what's, you know, the state has set buckets of RPS energy. They've gone through a lot of rulemaking to create categories and analyze this. But Glendale can, of course, be more restrictive, but I just want to make sure you're aware of the consequence, that there's, this is a much more limited category. And with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll leave it up to you to discuss.
Do any of my colleagues have, yes?
Just one comment. I just wanted to reiterate a point that Christine made, Mr. Mayor, was just, again, the reason that we were suggesting to put the change in the language that says the city intends to adopt these policies is because the resolution directs the staff to go and do a study, or hire a consultant to do a study on what it'll cost and what the feasibility is. And so our view is you should do those studies before adopting the policies. And that's kind of why we put it in there. Obviously, it's going to ultimately up to the council. But we think it's wise to put the cart, not put the cart before the horse, and do the study first before you decide what policy to adopt.
But is that a procedural preference, or is there anything that legally binds us to doing it that way?
It's mostly a procedural preference. I do have a concern. We adopt a policy, and then later, we have to backtrack it, and we have this policy that we then have to comply with without, without, we have a policy we have to comply with if any future project comes, and we have to address it in that manner. But it's mostly, it's mostly, and I'm not sure we call it procedural, but certainly a method to address the actual feasibility and cost before we implement the policy.
Okay. Do my colleagues have comments? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, Councilmember Najarian?
So where did, where did this come from? Who prepared this initial resolution? Is this the GEC?
I submitted. It's the people who prepared it. Some of them were members of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, but my understanding is it was prepared by a group of concerned citizens.
Okay. All right. I have a lot to say on this, but the first thing and most important is?
If I could, I just want, since we have callers and speakers, do you want to ask questions? And it's up to the mayor how you want to, how you want to handle this part of the meeting.
Well, here's a question. Whose idea was the subcommittee?
I think, well, the subcommittee idea came from?
I mean, do you endorse that, or?
I personally have a vision where all of us would separate certain areas of city council operations and functions, where we would dedicate ourselves to those which we care most about, and we'd become experts in that area, given that we all try, as we may, to cover a lot of ground, and sometimes we're not, you know, it's not ideal. I would support council member participation, for instance, in certain committees. I don't, I'm not completely against it. It would just depend on what it would look like.
My other question, and I'll save the discussion. There was an original version of this resolution. There was one that staff added to, and then there were some edits that Mr. Rothman floated out. So I'm not sure what I'm looking at at this point. So I'm not sure what I'm looking at, at this point. That's a question, maybe you can be ready to explain to me what I am looking at...
Sure.
...once the speakers...
That's what you're looking, I guess, as to answer the question. We have all of them up on the website, but we also, Councilmember Brotman's revisions have been provided also in hard copy since that came after the posting of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we also had received late this afternoon comments from Councilmember Satrian that hasn't been shared with council.
Okay, well, this will be the opportunity for everyone to say what their comments are, working off the document that staff has brought back, but we have, how many callers do we have right now, you said?
We have 11 callers.
So we're going to go to the people who are in the chambers first, and then we'll go to the callers. So first, to speak on this item, and you'll each have three minutes, is Elise Calfian. Elise?
Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and members of the city council. I'm Elise Calfian, a member of the Glendale Environmental Coalition. I support the original proposed resolution, and the language "non-carbon emitting energy generation and storage," that wording includes residential rooftop solar and storage. Eligible renewable resources refers to retail sales. So it, this "non-carbon emitting energy generation and storage" includes residential rooftop solar and storage, and it excludes biogas and carbon fuel combustion. So we'll all be better off with more local non-carbon emitting energy generation and a more resilient local system based on clean energy and storage. And we've gone through so many reports and meetings focused on the details of gas-burning engines and infrastructure, and here we are again, the next agenda item is about proceeding on the Grayson repowering work. We need this resolution's level of commitment to local clean energy development and expansion. And because customer-sighted solar and storage is smaller scale and distributed, it could happen much faster than installing new gas-burning equipment. People are waking up to the reality of the climate crisis. Our landscape and water sources are drying up, and wildfires are burning. The passage of the Federal Inflation Reduction Act is encouraging, so let's pair it with local action. So thank you for considering this resolution.
Thank you. Next is Karen Kwok.
Hi, I'm Karen Kwok, and I'm happy to support GEC Solar Solution. This is exactly what I wanted to see in Glendale for many years, and I'm happy to see a plan to push it forward. Now, it has occurred to me that Glendale is pathetically behind the rest of the state in the adoption of rooftop solar, and, you know, that leads us to wonder why. Okay, one proposed suggestion is, you have heard me say this many times, 67% of Glendale's residents are renters, and unfortunately, most incentives for rooftop solar are geared toward homeowners. Now, considering the number of multifamily units we have in Glendale, it would be appropriate to design incentives that appeal to both the owners and the occupants of multifamily units, because they are not always the same people, and they have different cost-benefit analyses. Okay, number two, you know, there is a perverse incentive that both the city and the GWP have to keep us dependent on GWP for power, as opposed to making us independent with rooftop solar, because of this annual transfer from electric works to the city. Now, one way to counteract this would be to include large community participation so that we can remind the city of what benefits the public, as opposed to what benefits the narrow self-interest of individual public agencies. It is also appropriate for our elected officials to counteract this by acting in the public good, not necessarily for a short-term gain. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Alec Bartrosiv.
Good evening, my name is Alec Bartrosiv. Good to see you in person. I'm on the City Sustainability Commission, though I'm here today to state my individual preference. I am here to support the original resolution as it was written. I assume you've read the letter from the Glendale Environmental Coalition. The two elements of the letter that I'd like to point out that I wholeheartedly support are setting aggressive, setting an aggressive timeline for the resolution. I think it's very important for a city, for the city to make a statement about when we want to achieve these goals. The other piece that I do support is to have a subcommittee among council to kind of hash out the details and work forward on a proposal. I also am looking forward to the intent of this resolution being memorialized in our climate action plan, so I'm very much looking forward to the work that the city's doing to adopt that policy, that framework, and this to be included in that framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Manuel McPapian.
My name is Manuel McPapian, I'm a resident of Glendale for 12 years now. I am here as well to support this resolution, and I personally believe that we're at a crisis point when it comes to the environment. I think this resolution is providing, provides Glendale with the opportunity to be a role model city for its neighboring cities as to how to tackle environmental problems and the crisis, and it provides us with the potential, the untapped potential that this market could provide us for our residents as well when it comes to solar. So I just wanted to say that we need to go above and beyond if we want to ensure that Glendale can one day be a 100% renewable-run city in terms of, with solar. So I respectfully request the city council to pass this resolution in order to ensure that Glendale is a cleaner, more environmentally-friendly city for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go now to the callers.
We have John Wanger on line. You have three minutes to speak. John, can you hear us? Next, we have Jennifer Pinkerton. Jennifer, can you hear us?
I can.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and councilmembers. I am a member of the Sustainability Commission, but am calling tonight as a Glendale resident who supports the original resolution. I also support the city committing to 100% non-carbon emitting energy by 2025. One obvious step to help achieve that is to install solar PV on city facility rooftops as soon as possible, rather than just a few megawatts per year that has been discussed. Lastly, climate change is not proceeding incrementally, so we can't either, and we need to challenge ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Teresa Cheng. Teresa, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Teresa Cheng, and I'm calling as a representative of the Sierra Club, and appreciate the opportunity to give comment today. I'm also calling to speak in support of the original resolution and increasing rooftop solar to 10%, committing to 100% clean energy by 2035, excluding biogas and biofuels, and taking other steps to avoid installing additional gas engines in Glendale. Just next door to Glendale, LA DWP has conducted extensive modeling on distributed energy resources, or DERs, like rooftop solar and storage for LA, and has found that having more DERs creates more reliability for the power grid. So I'm looking forward to seeing Glendale's leadership on this item, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Before we go to the next caller, I did skip over, I don't know, I just slipped, this card slipped, it was stuck to the one underneath it. Monica Campania, who's here and would like to speak. Monica, please come up.
I'm Mayor Kusakian. Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here tonight mostly, hopefully, to witness a momentous moment, the day our city commits to 100% carbon-free energy, plus geothermal and hydro. I do think that's important to keep in our mix. The same day, our president is set to sign the biggest climate bill in history. I'm also here to see city council adopt a resolution that will direct our utility to map out with the act of participation of a subset of city council programs, funding sources, policies, and outreach planning that will help our city meet or beat a 10% solar and storage adoption rate here by 2027. This resolution must not be simply symbolic, we have to put real resources behind it. Some things are free, like decreasing permitting fees and making permitting easier and more automatic, and allowing oversized systems. Any money not bonded to use at Grayson should be put to programs that will boost solar and storage adoption here for the homeowners, multifamily, commercial, and city-owned. And of course, the new federal incentives will help individuals a great deal and decrease Glendale's share of the burden. And funding available to the city from the IRA should be put to work for us. Unlike fossil fuel projects, clean energy projects can come online this year, next year, and the year after that. When it comes down to it, this is about where we're putting our precious dollars, and we must put them towards the energy we need for the future. With 100% hydrogen in internal combustion engines being speculative and very inefficient, the less we are depending on that option, the better. Clean energy resources, solar, storage, demand response, energy efficiency, they exist now, built and performing in our city, they will give us the most resiliency, they're going to give us independence from things beyond our control that happen outside of our city. They do not put us at the mercy of escalating gas prices. They're going to be assets, and we can call upon them before 2045. Just recently, the governor established some new climate goals. He suggested 90% clean energy by 2035, so really, we'll be helping ourselves out to set that goal today. I just wanted to lastly mention that as the person who, we've been asking our community members to sign on as supporters of increasing solar adoption beyond 10%, et cetera. And as the person who gets the website forms, I can tell you that the enthusiasm for this idea from the community is extremely strong. I have to check my emails constantly because they're continuing to roll in every hour. And these are from people that I've never met or heard of before. They aren't GEC members, they're just coming from our avenues outside, communicating the ideas that are in this resolution today. So I thank Mayor Kusakian for presenting the resolution, and I do hope we can celebrate this momentous day. Thank you so much.
Right, back to the callers.
Our next caller is Bert Culver. Bert, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. I'll be quick here. I prefer the resolution as originally worded. I dislike the living room of intends, that it gives a little too much room to the city to change plans. 10% should be a minimum, we should work as quickly as possible to go solar citywide. I prefer the term "non-carbon emitting energy." The last thing we need is GWP proposing to start, capture and store, storing of carbon pollution from Grayson in 2027. As I said, the Inflation Reduction Act is going to make billions available for going 100% green energy. We should take advantage of that. Instead of building a new gas plant, we should be using this federal money to go greener. The city should create a program that would finance solar panels for rental homes. The loan would be repaid through some of the savings in the energy bills for the renter. The tenant would also receive a discount on their bill. This would allow renters to go solar. They want to, and landlords want to go solar too, but the financial incentives aren't aligned. The city can make that happen. Unfortunately, my wife is having surgery tomorrow, and I won't be able to call in on 8C, but you guys know what my opinion is there. Don't spend tax money on more fossil fuel infrastructure, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Priscilla Kacha. Priscilla, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Priscilla Kacha. I am a Glendale resident in Glen Oaks Canyon for almost 50 years, and I support a clean energy in Glendale. We should increase rooftop solar to 10% of customers, commit to 100% clean energy by 2035, and take other steps to avoid installing additional gas engines in Glendale, and most importantly, to reject the Shaw Canyon biogas project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Tommy Fave. Tommy, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Tommy Fave. I represent the LAOC Building Trades Council, and on behalf of our members, our essential workers that build your infrastructure, and the makeup of our membership reflects the diversity of Los Angeles and Orange County. We are installing solar slash paired with battery storage that are so critical for us to lower the amount of toxins in the air to prevent climate change and keep our economy moving forward. We know that we must lower our emissions, that is not debatable. We also know that every government, private business, and working families must do their part. We urge the city council to work closely with the building trades when it comes to solar on top of the rooftops, whether it's residential, commercial, or industrial applications citywide. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Julie Kane Rich. Julie, you are on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. My name is Julie Kane Rich, and I am a resident of La Cañada of Flint Ridge, and a co-founder of the La Cañada of Flint Ridge Climate Coalition. I endorse the resolution as originally written as "an essential step towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the San Gabriel Valley." Enacting this resolution would mark Glendale as a leader in creating innovative green energy solutions for other cities like La Cañada to model. As you know, the harmful health pollution and climate impacts of greenhouse gas emissions do not honor city boundaries. The decisions made by the Glendale City Council impact not only my neighboring city, but our state, our country, and our planet as a whole. Please pass the original resolution to keep Glendale and our communities healthy and resilient in the face of climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Paul Berlzeimer. I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Paul, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and councilmembers. I'm Paul Berlzeimer, I'm a longtime resident and homeowner in Glendale. Please vote for the resolution establishing goals for clean energy targets with the modifications as recommended by GEC, to increase rooftop solar power to much more than 10% of buildings in Glendale, and to move as quickly as possible to 100% carbon-free electricity generation. As an aside, I would also like to take exception to the inclusion of nuclear power as being zero-carbon. It's not. Many of the ancillary aspects of nuclear power, the mining, transportation, and processing of nuclear fuels, the intensive maintenance required of nuclear plants, and the transportation, storage, and monitoring of nuclear waste for potentially thousands or tens of thousands of years are very energy-intensive and use a lot of fossil fuels. We are already experiencing the effects of climate change, with extreme weather events happening almost daily around the world. We must act to reduce and eliminate our emissions of greenhouse gases as cleanly as, as quickly as possible, and actions taken on a municipal level can, of course, have much greater effects, negatively or positively, than anything that any of us can do individually. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Joanne Hedge. Joanne, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, and good evening, city council and Mayor Kusakian. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I am a resident, 26 years, in the Riverside Rancho, and we're just, just downriver from us is the Grayson Power Plant, which doesn't need five new gas engines, but to speak to the solar, I completely endorse and support all the statements made prior to my remarks. We could be a model city, we could clean up our own air a lot faster, and folks like me, I'm almost 80, have dreamt of having solar on my own rooftop, an electric car I can plug in and recharge here. We are so behind, even the rest of California on this level. We really need to get caught up, we really need to take this seriously. Climate change is now. The clock is ticking, and it's not going to get any better. The clock is ticking, and it's not going to get any better. We really owe it to children and the elderly, but especially to our children coming up, to pass this resolution and work on it and implement it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jordan Balderson. Jordan, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Yes, I am a Glendale resident. I want you to support clean energy in Glendale. We should increase rooftop solar to 10% of customers, commit to 100% clean energy by 2035, and take other steps to avoid installing additional gas engines in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Joanne Pringle. Joanne, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Joanna Pringle, and I'm also asking you to approve this resolution with Glendale Environmental Coalition changes. My family has lived in Glendale for nearly four decades, so on the day the federal government signed the greatest climate bill ever, we have never been more excited about our future here. We believe the most recent City Council election was a mandate for change, especially in how Glendale fights the climate crisis by reducing pollution. Please commit to 100% clean energy by 2035. Thank you.
Our next caller is John Weiner. John, you're on air. You have three minutes. Our next caller is Glenn Webb. Glenn, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Glenn Webb. I am a scientist, a 25-year, or 28-year resident of Glendale, and I totally support this resolution. It is vital that we commit the city and the City Council to bringing clean energy to Glendale. And I have submitted, over the last five years, documents and analysis showing how we can do that. And we have another opportunity today to, not only to defeat the proposal to build a new gas plant in Glendale, but to bring a new proposal to the city with sufficient battery storage and the new 72 megawatts of transmission, which is a game changer for the city of Glendale, that we can have the most robust power plant in the United States. We have an opportunity to do that. And so first, we needed to implement this resolution and commit the City Council, which the City Council, as well as Glendale Water and Power, has said, we're the leader in clean energy, and now we have an opportunity to provide that. So that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next person is Kate Unger. Kate, you are on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Thank you very much, City Council and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanted to just make a note about the language. SB 100 is focused on utilities' retail sales to customers, so taking language from SB 100 risks cutting out distributed generation, and it also includes biogas, which is not carbon-free energy. So I would recommend that City Council use whatever language is appropriate to ensure that distributed solar is included and biogas is excluded. Hydroelectric, wind, nuclear, geothermal should all be included. If it doesn't emit carbon, it's a winner. I just wanted to highlight, I think, one of the most important elements of this resolution is expanding the opportunities for Glendale residents and businesses to take part in our community's energy future. I would love to see this go forward, and especially to focus the most effort to encouraging adoption by lower-income customers, multifamily residents, and renters. A clean energy solution for us all should include us all, and this is such a great opportunity for our community. I thank Mayor Kasakian for introducing the resolution and Councilmember Brotman for seconding it, and I hope our City Council will pass it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by David Eisenberg. David, you are on air, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. My name is David Eisenberg. I'm here today calling from the Sierra Club. We are one of the signers on to the original proposal. You'll see the Sierra Club logo, and I personally have signed on to this proposal. It's, you know, your next discussion, item 8C, you're going to be talking about things that had this been in place three years ago or four years ago, you wouldn't have the next item coming up. You know, as far as resiliency and local energy, this is very important. When you do the discussion and when you look at the implementation, you know, I'd like to make sure that you take a good, hard look at commercial multifamily homes and think of incentives for renters and owners and for people who live in condominiums so that everybody can benefit from this. There's a lot of square footage of roofs. I've looked at satellite views where there are no solar panels, and we have a lot of space. It would reduce our demand, and the battery storage would keep us, would make us more resilient. So thank you for considering this. I'm so glad that you brought this up, and please vote yes. Bye.
Thank you. Our last public comment is by John Weiner. John, you are on air. You have three minutes. Mayor Kasakian, I've attempted to connect with John Weiner three times. I am going to drop the call.
All right, thank you.
That's all for the public.
Thank you very much, and thank you for everyone who called in, and especially those who've actually come to the chambers to share your thoughts and views. We truly appreciate it. With that, I know that my colleagues probably have questions. I know that there's different versions of this now out there, so let's try to hammer out and come up with something that we can all agree on. What do you say? Councilmember Brotman.
Thank you, Mayor Kasakian and everyone that called in. So let me, I'm going to make a few comments, and then I want to drill down a little bit into this definition question because it is important. So first, you know, what is this all about? To me, it's about dramatically increasing and accelerating our efforts to develop local clean energy resources. It's an unambiguous message from this council that the time for small steps, business as usual, long lead times just doesn't work anymore, and that we need to set stretch goals. And 10% solar penetration by 2027 is absolutely a stretch goal. Can we make it? I think it's feasible, but it's going to be very, very difficult. But I'm all for, I'm all for setting the bar high. 100% by clean, 100% clean energy by 2035. Again, I think that is doable. We've already heard from one of our consultants to send, what do they call it, to send analytics, send analytics, ransom numbers now, I don't know if that was two years ago, it's quite a while ago, showing that we can get to 89%, I believe it was, by 2030, just with our existing programs. There was maybe, there was maybe the assumption of a few additional things. There was the virtual power plant, but it didn't count on hydrogen at the Intermountain Power Plant. There were some other things. So I think it was a pretty fair assessment, and I think we can, you know, maybe we can up that a little bit to get to around 90 by 2030. And then that last 10% is always the most difficult. Whether we can get all the way to 100, I think it's going to depend on probably technologies that don't exist today, but, you know, LA has signed up for the same thing, and they've, it's a little bit of a moonshot, but we have to set, we have to set the goal. So I think that's what this is about. Why this is needed, from my perspective, it's because we really have so little to show for the efforts that we've been making since the first clean energy RFP in 2018. I believe our total achievement towards the original 50-megawatt goal is 3 megawatts. I believe that we've taken too traditional an approach, and we have fallen short. We've, in my opinion, tied ourselves up in knots to make the virtual power plant perfect, and in the end, we dragged this out for years, and then circumstances got in the way, and that project is dead, and that was a huge disappointment. We do have these programs, the Franklin Program and the Willdan Energy Efficiency Program. The Franklin Program, I participate in, but I just think the incentives are not there to get the kind of adoption we need, and it is just a residential thermostat program. There's so much more that we can do in demand response. We have to do it. The Willdan Energy Efficiency Program, we're not getting the conversion rates with customers that LA is in their program. We're getting about 40%, meaning four out of 10 customers that are approached and are given a proposal to do an energy efficiency retrofit are saying yes. 60% are saying no. In LA, the conversion rate is about 98%, and that's all about how we're pricing and marketing the program. So we have to do better. We also are our own worst enemy in other ways. Our solar permitting has a lot of problems that need to be addressed. We place limits on the size of solar and battery systems. We don't let people build more than 100% of their demonstrated energy use. And we failed completely on solar and storage on commercial industrial buildings. We've gotten nowhere since 2018, even though we had a very good proposal, and we started the discussion with PermaCity, but we dropped that discussion after several months, saying that we could do it better ourselves, but we've done zero. We've done zero since then. So I think that's why this is needed. It's needed to send a very strong message that we need to start doing things more aggressively, and we need to pull out all the stops. So I hope, you know, that message gets across, assuming my colleagues support it, and that staff sees this as a serious call to action. So let me talk about just the markups that I made that you all have in front of you, if I could do that. I don't think we need to go back to the original version. I think staff's markups, the changes that staff made, I think are mostly fine.
Can I interrupt? Yeah, just for clarification. I have your markup. Is this on top of staff's?
This is on top of staff's.
Gotcha.
Okay. So I took staff's, and most of what I saw, I think, was fine, was good, clarifying. It was all right. I made, I didn't make a lot of changes. I'll just mention a few of them. You can all see it. I wanted to cut back a little bit on the cheerleading because there was a comment here about the City Council adopted an integrated resource plan for the city with ambitious clean energy goals establishing Glendale as a clean energy leader. I think just having the plan doesn't establish us as a clean energy leader. We have to realize the plan. So I've changed it to saying, which if realized, would establish Glendale as a clean energy leader. Just a small point, but I think we've got to be self-critical. Okay, a more important point is, I did think it was worth mentioning, after we talk about the projects at Shoal, the biogas project, and the Grayson Alternative 7, I think it is worth noting that, yes, Alternative 7 is the, is the preferred, environmentally preferred alternative. However, let's be, let's be real, the Grayson and Shoal projects are carbon emitting and do contribute to global climate change and local air pollution, just stating it as a Then I have down in one of the recitals, it talks about the solar penetration. This one is important, where it says that approximately 2.5% of GWP customers currently have solar energy. I did want to make the comparison to the state of California originally, and we didn't, and those numbers were kind of hard to get to. So what I did instead is I put in numbers for the three big IOUs. Southern California Edison, which is approximately 10% of customers have solar. It's 12% for Pacific Gas and Electric, and it's 16% for San Diego Gas and Electric. And I wanted to put that in just, you know, the circumstances are different in those markets. I understand that. They're different. I mean, one difference is their rates are a lot higher than ours, so there's a lot more incentive to put on solar. Nonetheless, it does demonstrate that there's significant potential to increase our solar penetration rates in Glendale, and I thought it was important to point that out. The rest is not that important until we get to the definition, and that's where I was hoping we could drill into this non-carbon emitting, clean, renewable, and all that. So I think, I think the issue is, you know, I don't want to get tied up with the state's RPS definition, but when we talk about, at least for me, I'll talk about for myself, when I talk about getting to 100% clean energy, yeah, we have to include everything that, you know, pretty much everything that is today renewable and zero-carbon. Where my concern is, is number one, I don't want us to meet our goal by going out and sourcing a lot of biofuels. Biofuels are carbon emitting, and the development of biofuels is, has a lot of environmental problems. Now, if we have existing biofuels and we're using them, which is our plan, okay, let's set that aside. But I'm talking about going out and identifying incrementally biofuels that would help us meet our 100% clean energy goal. I would like to see us not do that. I do have a question, and I don't know if anybody on staff has the answer, as to whether LA's 100 includes biofuels. I think it probably does. Does it not? You don't know. Let's look into that. It may include it. I'm not quite sure, but that's, that's the thing. Sorry, I know I'm going along with there's some details here. So that's the thing, I don't want to, I don't want to exclude any of the things we currently have in our portfolio otherwise, like obviously geothermal, we don't want to exclude. We don't want to exclude large hydro. We don't want to exclude existing nuclear. We're not going to be building new nuclear, but existing nuclear, you know, those resources, I want to make sure we include, obviously solar, battery storage, and the rest of it. And then there is this, lastly, this question of how do we handle rooftop solar? Because in the RPS, in the statewide RPS, rooftop solar is not considered a resource. It's considered a reduction in load, right? It's just kind of the denominator, not the numerator and the denominator. And I don't know how we deal with that, and I think that was, you know, one of the callers referenced that, because people look at it and say, why isn't rooftop solar part of, why isn't that considered renewable? And it's not simply because it's considered by the state to remove load. Whether we look at it differently, I don't know. I'll leave that, I'll leave that open, but that's, that's kind of where I am on this whole thing.
Councilmember Najari?
Okay, now that I see where these remarks fit in, I think the comparison, as you mentioned, to PG&E, Southern California Edison, and San Diego is a false, is an improper narrative because I think primarily, as you said, first, their rates are so much higher. Secondly, because we have such a high percentage of multifamily units in Glendale. So you're throwing our number up there versus San Diego, and you're making it look like we're not doing anything, which I think is an improper comparison. So I'm not thrilled about those, citing those. citing those, those percentages. Because the fact that San Diego has 16% doesn't in any way demonstrate what our potential is. It doesn't mean that our potential can get to 16%. You took out the line that says the city desires to maintain its position as a leader in local clean renewable energy. Well, I think, I think the numbers show that we're at the head of the pack, if not the leader, but that's, that's dicta more than anything else. The thing that is a non-starter for me is the subcommittee. There is no way I can support this resolution that's going to take out of the hands of three other council members, the, the discretion to assist in identifying one or more consultants, complete the work, reviewing and providing input into the consultant's scope of work. The subcommittee will review and receive all drafts of the consultant work concurrently with staff. We don't have any subcommittees in this city. I can't remember the last time we had one. So it's a non-starter for me. I don't know about anyone else, but this, everything else before this could have been written in gold, but I'm not going to start down the path of creating a subcommittee. The last sentence troubles me. The last sentence that you don't want is that the plan shall consider electric system reliability. I mean, does that mean that there shall be no consideration for the reliability of electric service to our city? Well, that's, that's, it's crossed out.
I'll explain it later when you're done.
Okay. So I don't like that. That's probably the second thing that I'm very concerned about. The net metering issue, as I understand it, although we're trying to promote that, it will present inequities to those folks that do not have solar on their roofs, such as the renters, the 67% renters that we have in this city. So how we deal with that, I'm not sure, but we're giving all these benefits to those that have solar, but the folks that have to pay regular electric rates because they're not offset are getting hit with all the infrastructure. Not all the infrastructure, but with most of the infrastructure. I don't think that's fair. So those are my three main issues. And at this point, I'm a no on this. Although I agree with a lot of what's in here, at this point, I'm a no. Unless you guys want me to rubber stamp it, which I don't think you do. There's some good in here. I like the aspirational components of it, but to set it, I understand you want it to be a little more firm, to give us firm direction. My concern then is what if we don't make that direction? Do department heads get fired because we gave you the direction? City Attorney, Sustainability Director, Mark Young, whoever it is. I think it's a little bit too, too strict, setting a direction rather than setting an aspiration. So those are mine.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Before I turn it over, Councilmember Asatrian, would you like to make your comments?
Sure.
Sure. And, you know, here I was thinking I was going to nominate you for that committee, Councilmember Najarian. I want you to be one of two.
Does that change anything? I would not accept. And I would not serve if nominated.
If nominated, I will not run. If nominated, I will not serve. All right. Good. Councilmember Asatrian, please.
First and foremost, I'm very excited about this resolution. So I want to thank you and Councilmember Brotman. I think it's critical for us to serve as a model city. I am okay with the changes that Councilmember Brotman has brought forth. I would like to keep, and I think Councilmember Najarian did mention this, the, whereas the city desires to maintain the position as a leader. I'm okay with keeping that. And section four, I would like to take it back to will establish, which was their, their original language, instead of intends to adopt. It's just watering it down. We either are or we're not. Section four, the city of Glendale, the original read, the city of Glendale intends to adopt policies, will, will establish policies. And then the revised version had the city of Glendale intends to adopt. And I think will establish is stronger than intends to adopt. It's just watering down the language. So I prefer it to be back to its original form. And then I have, this is something that I had emailed in the afternoon, under section seven, after the second bullet, I would like to add, the analysis must include direct and indirect impacts to low and moderate income households. Should analysis conclude any negative impact, the report must also include program options to mitigate that negative impact. So I, we keep talking about how this is going to have an impact on our low-income families and our renters. I'd like there to be an analysis for that, and I want us to be committed to mitigating those impacts and having that in the report that's coming back to us. I'm, I'm totally fine with the subcommittee. That's that.
All right.
Okay.
Councilmember DeBino.
All right. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Young. Are we grossly, grossly behind in solar production? As was stated by, I think, one of the callers or someone in the audience? I don't know.
I don't believe we're grossly behind in solar production. I think we're processing the applications as fast as we can. Unfortunately, COVID hit, so there was some delay. And I believe there's, there's a little bit more delay than I want, but I think that rooftop solar is based on whether residents want rooftop solar on their houses. And if they did, they would apply and we would process those applications and they would get rooftop solar on their houses.
Okay. How can we involve condo and apartment renters? I, I'm of the understanding that solar on residential homes, single-family homes, will be paid for on the backs of renters, low-income, people that are living in affordable housing. And I don't see any of the renters' advocates coming before us and saying, what are you going to do for the renters? I want to know, how is this going to impact them? Is it going to cost them more?
So generally speaking, if we're going to subsidize solar, solar installations on people's houses, and then they use the solar production to not buy energy from GWP, that means there'll be less, there'll be less kilowatt hours sold. And the people that are actually buying the kilowatts from us, their fixed, their fixed bill will go up.
So those people that are living in the affordable houses that we are, units that we are building now, could possibly be facing higher electrical bills because of solar being put on all of our residential, our single-family homes?
That's true.
Okay. So we're going to affordable housing, but we're going to raise the rent. Okay. Tell me what happened with PermaCity. Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman mentioned, what happened with PermaCity that we, did we let them go or?
So in PermaCity's response to the RFP, we didn't feel that it was a valid response. They wanted to put solar panels on the LA, on the LA River. They also wanted to put solar panels on our fire roads in the mountains. So we decided that we would look at putting solar on city-owned properties for ourselves, and we would not exercise the option with PermaCity.
We'd be better off putting it on our reservoirs if we can. We can look into that, can't we?
We presently have 66 sites. We're almost ready to present that, those findings. One of the big places that we were going to put solar on was the Garfield campus of Glendale College, and they backed out last minute. So that was a huge project that we were focusing on. So in, in Councilmember Brotman's response, yes, we were a little, we were slow in implementing these, but what we were doing is we were trying to find appropriate facilities in properties that we own, and then make a concerted effort to have a plan to put solar on all of these, all of those properties. So we're close to being able to present that. And once we do, we have owners' engineers already on staff or already on a binder to actually produce whatever is necessary for us to start putting solar on those facilities.
Okay. As far as this, this resolution goes, I feel that it's, and I, I think, Skadinas, you, you hit on this, the fact that it's very restrictive. It's almost like putting handcuffs on our staff. You know, you only can deal with the, these certain non-carbon, this certain technology. And I, I think it behooves us to look at all technology that is renewable, clean, green. So, you know, I, I, I worry a little bit about the semantics of this. You know, we must do this, we must, well, what if we can't do it? I mean, we're going to fire staff? Are we going to, you know, we're putting a gun to their head and saying, you're going to do this by, you know, whenever? I would agree with staff's, you know, I want to see us get to 10% solar. I, you know, I want to, I want to see us get to 100%. I was the one that wanted it by 2030 and was, was proven wrong. I'm almost done. So I would be willing to approve the, the amended resolution. I think it has some good points in it. I think, I think we need a plan. As far as the committee goes, we have a sustainability commission. We have a very good, or what has been a very good GWP commission. I don't see a need to have more people telling staff what to do. We can have consultants. We have you all. You have done amazing research and, and so I'm, I'm also in agreement that I don't think the committee is necessary. But I would agree to the resolution as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that, you know, there's this concern about whether this is legally binding. It's truly what I believe is necessary and aspirational. So that was when, when I was approached with this idea of introducing this resolution, why I was supportive of it, why I think is necessary, is because all the reasons that we're seeing on the news and every day. We are facing serious crises. There are things, small things that we can do here. Do I believe that what we do here immediately is going to have this great global impact? No. But, you know, drop by drop, every little thing that we do will resonate and make a difference, especially as we're looking at, you know, how much more of a demand there's going to be for electricity. I get it. It's not perfect. Nothing is. The mere act of trying to build the necessary batteries and mine the minerals necessary to build the batteries to have the capacity to do all these things, there's something disagree, disagree us with our appetite for all the things we want to do and the materials and how we acquire them to do them. However, it is certainly a less harmful way of doing it if we move towards a more electrified system as a whole versus relying on fossil fuels, which are not renewable, the extraction and exploitation of which have severe impacts on, in a variety of levels. I think that is not the discussion here because I think we all are now, I think everyone agrees on that. I don't think that there's anyone here that disagrees with that per se. However, here in the city of Glendale, with all due respect to Mr. Young and to previous councils, to say that, you know, have we grossly fallen behind in solar? I don't know what the measurement of grossly is, but I can tell you, I've been sitting here in these chambers, when we've had individuals who've come in, who've wanted to put solar on their households, and, you know, they've received pushback because of things such as design review, that, you know, you cannot put solar on a historical house or on an older structure or on, you know, if it's visible from the street. Those discussions and those complaints have come from various neighborhoods. Nowadays, I think we're in a different place. You see solar in a lot of different places, and I don't think people care one bit when they see them. You know, we're in a different place, and we should take advantage of that. And we should be leading the way, both within our own, I mean, whatever it takes to get our city sites to use solar, but also encouraging everyone else to do it, not just simply saying, well, you know, if they will come to us, and when they do, we'll try to expedite it. We need to be proactive in encouraging it. And with that, I do also think that, you know, the points are well-made about this benefiting homeowners versus apartment owners. We need to also figure out, how do we get the apartment owners on board as well? How can we increase the amount of solar on every available rooftop, on every available parking lot, wherever we can to take advantage of, take advantage of what we have here most abundantly, which is many, many days of available sunshine? I'm fine with, I, I agree with Councilmember Najarian, maybe not in all the exact reasonings for it, but the portion where we talk about what Southern California Edison has and Pacific PG&E and San Diego Gas and Electric, you know, those figures, even if they are absolutely accurate, I think locking them in right now, when they may change in the future or may change by the time when all's said and done, I'm fine with leaving those out. I think we, I think more than comparing ourselves to anyone else, we should focus on ourselves first. And we should try and increase the amount of solar energy being used in our city. Again, I don't believe that this is legally binding, but it does provide us the guidelines, the rails by which every other action that we take should be viewed. In terms of the definitions, you know, staff, whatever, I, I'm, I'm open to hearing some more on that item, but I think that the intent of what we're trying to do is very clear. We need to move away from fossil fuels as much as possible. And in terms of the last line, well, let me just address the big issue that everyone, some of us have concerns with. Am I, I don't want this to necessarily fail because I would like us all to be together on this. If the issue of a committee is what's going to prevent Councilmember Najarian from supporting this, allow me to ask you this question, Councilmember. What, how would you like to, or how do you envision us keeping track of us making sure that we're following the intent of this, that we're getting regular updates, that we're not just paying lip service to this absent of a council member-involved committee? And with council member committee, it could even rotate. It could be various council members, or it could be a briefing that is given to council members at various times. And I, I wasn't joking when I said that I envision you as being one of those individuals.
So, so here's what I was thinking. We had a election recently, and we had an election two years ago. And I was elected by a certain number of residents. And in that job duty, I'm supposed to play a role in the activities of the city council. To pick a committee with two, regardless of who that two is, you are disenfranchising those who supported the other three council members. So I'm totally against that. Now, in direct answer to your question, I think we should have a regular report, just on, just every week on the agenda. If there's nothing to report, nothing to report. But it's before us every week. If something does occur, then even if it's an incremental If something does occur, then even if it's an incremental step that we take, then we hear about it and we discuss it because it's agendized, and we give direction to staff. Or we just listen. I know the city manager's going, oh, I got more direction, but at least we're informed on, on what's going on.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, my city council, to Councilmember Najarian's point, if it's agendized, and as you know, then we have to draft staff reports nowadays, two, three weeks in advance.
You have to? Can't it be an oral report?
We can do an oral report, but we can't take direction. What I was going to suggest, we can most certainly provide regular updates in a written format, in the form of a memo to council. And when there is significant development or change, then we can bring it to council as a report. Or you can set, you know, in our world, like I've said before, the wheels of government turn, but they turn slowly. We can schedule monthly or perhaps quarterly, regular updates in front of council with an agenda report, with a staff report, with details, and in between, we'll provide you regular updates in form of a memo.
Councilmember Devine.
Question. And if you do that, if you provide us with you, updates, if there's an item on the update that we would like to see a report on, then we can always request that, correct?
Most definitely.
And then we can bring that to, to the public and to council and discuss.
And, and as you may recall, we have done this before. We, we failed to do it in the last couple of months because we were busy writing this staff report, but on a regular basis, we provided updates on, on all grace and repowering-related, all the clean energy initiatives and programs. Sometimes, as was mentioned, there was no updates, and we said no update for the month, but we did provide regular updates until, up until recently.
Okay.
I'd be satisfied with that.
I would be, yes, Councilmember Asadrian.
Councilmember Najarian, the council members also serve on various committees, whether it's the Burbank Airport Authority and other committees. Not all five of us that are on there. How, how do you see this as being different?
The jurisdictional questions of those different agencies expand beyond the borders of Glendale. And this particular issue is entirely within the city of Glendale. It involves our ratepayers, involves our reliability, it involves our pollution, it involves distribution. So I mean, I think it's different.
Does the committee actually have other powers, or is it stripping powers from the council in general of making decisions?
I, I don't see, I did not envision the committee as stripping powers from the council. I don't see it as giving direction, unilateral direction versus making sure that the work is moving at the pace that we expected to. That's, I think, the intent of, if you were to ask me, what is the intent of this? It's to set a goal and achieve a goal. It is, you know, putting up that vision board, where we are, where we want to be, and then working our way towards that. So council participation in it, I envision it as, you know, it could be council members attending a briefing, the briefing that would come to all of us, coming to two individuals that we would select amongst us, would listen to that, and, you know, could report back to us in council as well. If that is not what you are envisioning or what you would like to see, then I'm fine for a time being to see us have a regular report from staff, regular updates as to where we stand with this. But my concern is that, you know, again, this falls by wayside. We get caught up in this municipal inertia where something else takes our attention. I like the idea of council members themselves taking ownership over certain policy areas and becoming immersed in those policy areas and then working with all of us, your colleagues, and helping us make collective decisions for the benefit of the city. It's not something unique. I think it happens in other jurisdictions. I've seen it happen in other jurisdictions, and I think it could work here as well. This could be the first thing, could be expanded to other areas. I think that you would be an ideal person for transportation and mobility and, and participating also in those subcommittees. Some others may be interested in arts and culture, but I think this would not be the end of the world if we were to have council members serving on a committee, working with staff. I think that there's this concern of the interaction of how it will be with staff, and I want to assure that is not the intent of this.
Can I make a few comments?
Councilmember Brodmann.
Yeah. I think, how I saw this subcommittee was that, you know, it's difficult to get things on the council agenda. We have so many things. And, and so I thought it would be helpful to be able to have a subset of council, give advice and participate in some of the back and forth with staff as they're doing things like identifying consultants or, you know, drafting a scope of work or developing an RFP. I've been very frustrated about this last RFP because I thought it had a lot of flaws, and there was no opportunity really for me to, to provide any input into, into what went out in that RFP. And I think, I think because of the nature of that RFP, we're going to get a lot of, a lot fewer responses than we would have liked. I'm not, you know, I, I want this to be something that all of us sign on to, so I don't want this subcommittee to be, you know, the, the breaking point to prevent you from supporting it. So, you know, we can try something with more, you know, regular reporting. I just don't want us to go back to business as usual and things to move at the slow pace they've moved in the past. That's really what it is. I want, I wanted to find a way to, maybe we can be a little more nimble. That was the intent. It wasn't to cut anybody out. So I'll be flexible on that because I think this is the kind of thing that really is important that we pass it on a five oh vote. You know, I think that's really important for, for the success of this. Can I address the reliability thing? I didn't mean to say reliability is not important. I just thought that it just didn't seem, it seemed like it didn't fit in because this is a plan for how we're going to achieve our, these, these goals of solar and clean energy. I mean, reliability is like, I, I kind of looked at it and said, duh, you know, of course. But if you think it sets the wrong message by crossing it out, I'm happy to have it in. It's, it's just kind of something I thought goes without saying. I think those were the two things I wanted to, I wanted to respond to you on. Oh, oh, sorry, one more thing. I mean, that, yeah, the comparisons with Edison and, and PG&E. I know that, look, I'm not going to fall on the sword over that one either. That's just in the recitals. I just thought it was important to show that there is a lot of, there is a lot of room for us to improve. I don't think, I think we're, we're no, we're probably on par with the other municipally-owned utilities like Burbank and Pasadena and LA. It's not like they're significantly ahead of us in any way. The IOUs are clearly ahead of us, but it just shows that, that there is a market. People want it, and that was my only purpose.
And, and not including it wouldn't be considered a denial of the reality. I think it's important for us, for instance, to hold us, ourselves up to that California state standard, right, which is, I think, ten percent or so. So I think that is more appropriate than getting into the weeds. Yes, Mr. Young.
I think we need to keep in mind that if sun, if the sunrun program were to have gone through, that was three to four thousand homes that were going to get solar on their home, on their homes. So we were, we were very concentrated on making sure that that virtual power plant was going to get those homes. And I think if you added those three to four thousand homes to the existing homes that we now, that, that we now have, that two point five percent would be radically different.
Sure. No, without a doubt. But, you know, what if, should have, could have, we'll, we'll get there, but we first need to pass this so we can. Councilmember Najarian.
So therefore, let me tell you where I think we are with regard to the, Dan's modifications, then. Will we leave out the PG&E comparison? We will ditch the subcommittee. We will.
Substitute it for.
Regular reporting or as often as city manager. Monthly.
Monthly will be, will work for now.
And include somewhere in there the, the reliability, the sentence, "The plan shall consider electric system reliability." I think that was.
Impacts to low, moderate income.
Yes, 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 include that.
The bullet point on seven that Ms. Asatiran talked about.
And also councilmembers Najarian and Asarjan wanted to revert back to the city's desire to maintain the possible, the position, its position as a leader in local clean renewable energy.
And then section four, go back to, we'll establish.
Can I, can I, can I address that? I mean, just to add on to my, my other comments, again, we're, I think from a staff perspective and legal perspective, we would want to make sure that the, the plan is legal to say the, just in, it may be in its semantics, but to say, "We'll establish," could, a couple of things, could arguably be considered a project under CEQA that actually requires analysis before we adopt it. That's one. Two is, for example, if we go through a plan that maybe excludes the, the purchase of additional biofuels, there are certain state law requirements that we would have to do before we could even do that. So I, I, we're not, intend not to water down to, to make sure that we are not adopting anything that actually violates the law. So that, that's the reason why we're, we are, I'm recommending that we go with the language that said, "We intend to establish." Again, we, we're hearing you loud and clear where the council wants to go with this, and it's not, it's not an attempt to slow foot it.
You're satisfied with that, Councilmember? All right. With that, I think we have enough feedback, and hopefully staff has been taking notes.
Wait.
Yes.
Councilmember Devine, I think when you were making your comments, you had said you're okay with the staffs revised.
Yes.
Did I understand that?
Well, whatever.
People were working from council member.
No, we're, we're making changes now, and I'm, I'm in agreement with all of that.
We're in the kitchen right now, mixing it, cracking eggs, putting in flour. I think that.
That's right.
There's all sorts of hands, hands in this right now, so I think we, we're almost there. So with that, I think we have something that we could introduce.
May I?
Or, or make a motion? Yes, Ms. Skodinas.
So I think there are still a couple blanks. I've been capturing what you have, and I think that's.
Thank you.
So far, but there's, in sections five, six, and seven, there's blank dates. And then there's also the question of clean versus non-renewable versus.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Those are two open eyes.
Thank you. So, so as results of this analysis are to be reported to the city council on or before. So when do we want the on or before dates to be for sections five, six, and seven? And we're striking section eight and replacing it with regular reports, a monthly report to city council.
I shall present a monthly report to city council.
Monthly report. We'll see how that goes.
Okay.
May come back to it. We'll see. But as far as the on or before date, does anyone have any suggestions?
Mr. Mayor.
Or staff? Yes, please.
Yeah. Just the standard operating procedure, SOPR, standard operating procedure for drafting in an RFP, putting it out on the street, asking, seeking proposals, reviewing the proposals, going through the insurance requirements, and execution of the agreement at minimum will take six months.
Eesh.
I know.
Nothing happens overnight, folks.
Can we do it in five and a half months?
Sure can.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Brodmann.
What do we do? I mean, that's standard operating procedure. What do we do? Let's say it's a crisis. COVID is hitting us. We, we find ways to do things differently and, and more quickly. What, what can we do to turn that six months into three months?
Well, as, as your city manager, I have authority in emergency situations. It's debatable whether this is any.
An emergency?
For example, I mean, because it would be a professional service agreement, the city manager could forego doing an RFP process, but that seems contrary to what the council wants to do in this case. So that's why when you bake that in, it really does take it out to, to that period of time. And that's just, just to ward the contract.
Sure. We can, we can avoid bringing the RFP to city council if that's, again, your desire to get approval of it, so that will save a couple of weeks.
If, if the alternative is to not bring the RFP to council, only to save a couple of weeks, I would rather have it come to council because there's, we've heard from my colleagues that there's a need for input and, and feedback and, and reviewing that.
Could I suggest giving the, the staff a timeline to bring the, the RFP to the council? And then from that point, the council will select what the remaining of the, remainder of the timeline is?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that, that works, and would three months be enough for you to draft something and bring it back to us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is everyone okay with that? We see an RFP within three months?
Yeah, I'm also just wondering, since we have hired EcoMotion to help us with things, is there any possibility that they could?
Help with the RFP?
Accelerate things.
We can, Councilmember Brodmann, certainly engage their services in drafting the RFP based on their knowledge and expertise.
Just trying to find any way to, you know, because I know we have bottlenecks just because you have so many things you're working on. So anything we can do, I would like to shrink that.
Yeah, I would say three months at the outset is, is reasonable.
So, Ms. Skodinas, does that?
That's just for the RFP, Ms. Skodinas.
So staff is directed to prepare an RFP and present it to council for its consideration in three months? Within three months?
Within, within three months.
Okay.
We'll try and make it earlier if we can.
Councilmember Devine, you have a comment?
No, I was just going to ask if, if using this consultant, whoever, would it be an extra cost fee for the city?
Yes, Councilmember Devine, definitely.
Can I just mention though, so the, the different, I'm not sure if it's intended to be one consultant or different consultants, but it seems to me that the first step is for a consultant to figure out what the plan is, right? And then for someone to look at, well, how much dispatchable capacity can you get from that? And then it sounded like maybe a third consultant looking at, what's the cost and benefit of that? Or it's maybe one consultant in three phases.
Councilmember Brodmann?
I mean, ideally, it would be one.
Yeah, I see.
To do all, okay.
Yeah. And Mr. Young?
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, we actually tried, we, we did reach out to NREL, and it was extremely long time, timeframe before they can actually start working on it. But if they were going to run a stochastic model on our load, you would need to have some kind of software that would be able to run that. And then you would have to have some COSA, cost of service study, to analyze the effects of the portfolio. And I don't know if those expertise is all in one shop. That, that's only, that's my only concern. And if we were to actually have a different person do the COSA than we normally have doing our COSA, there might be some kind of errors.
Okay.
So, so then what's the bottom line there?
What would you suggest?
Yeah, one, two.
Well, what I would suggest is I would, I would definitely put out an RFP for that services, but put it in as an and/or and allow, allow an NREL to, I don't think they'd do that, but you'd have to ask them. We did ask NREL, and it's more like you have to ask them to work for you as opposed to them responding to an RFP. So I just want to make sure that anything that we pick is going to be okay across the board, that this company is a good company, that, I don't, I don't want to get to the point of we do the whole process and they'll say, well, you handpicked that company. So that's the concern that I have, and I think that an objective company, I use NREL as an example, that's where, that's where you'd want us to reside, I assume, right? In, in an NREL type of environment.
If I may suggest something, Mr. Mayor, members of council, once we have finished the RFP, with those options, we'll bring it to council for further discussion and direction. That way you have a menu of options to choose from, as opposed to having to decide today.
Including the and/or and separating it out for someone who can do the COSA versus the other aspects of it.
Right. And, and we'll include some timelines so, so you can see what the impacts would be.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask why it's taking three months for us to get the RFP? What's the process that's making it, that requires that three-month period for us to get them?
Yeah, Councilmember Asatiran, it's the staff resources that we currently don't have, so we have to, staff needs to do some, conduct some research to be able to put this RFP together and write it up, make sure that all the legal terms are vetted through the city attorney's office, the insurance requirements, and then to bring it to council, we need to agendize. And then, to bring it to council, we need to agendize it three weeks in advance, so. And like I said, we will strive for shorter than that, if we can, with the help of consultants. But that's typically what it takes for the, for a RFP of this magnitude to be put together.
We're just talking about bringing monthly reports, right? And, and, and the.
No, I'm sorry. This, this request for proposals would be from consultants.
I understand. Wait, so you would bring back the actual proposals from the consultants, or we would see the RFP that's going to go out?
We will, you, as council, will see the RFP that's going to go out, seeking proposals from consultants for the, the scope of services.
Okay. And that would require three months?
We'll try, again, to do it as fast as we can. Hiring consultants, obviously, will, will be helpful, outside resources, but that's what typically takes.
All right. And Ms. Godinez, what was the last item that you needed clarification on?
For the sections, particularly sections two and three of the resolution. Section two, it is the policy of the city of Glendale that future investments in equipment and infrastructure to produce electricity to serve the needs of the city and utility customers will, to the maximum extent possible, be in. You know, the, our suggestion was to use the SB 100 language of eligible renewable energy resources and zero-carbon resources. You know.
And if the council wasn't comfortable with that, to, you know, should say clean renewable or non-carbon emitting, and they wanted to exclude something like biofuels, not already approved by the city.
Yeah. That, that would make sense to me. I mean, I just got clarification that the LEDWP plan does not include biofuels.
Okay.
So, I would like to finesse that and, you know, find a way that we're not having biofuels be part of the portfolio, apart from, you know, the potential exception of, you know, existing biofuels that we have locally, that, you know, we're not, we're not out seeking new, new resources there.
Do you have the wording then?
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Mike, do you have the wording on that? It's fine, as long as you've got it captured.
I think so. So, what we're saying is clean renewable or non-carbon emitting, excluding new biofuel sources not already approved or allowed in the city. You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then on section three, the city of Glendale intends to achieve, and it's unclear, frankly, what, what achieve means, but city of Glendale intends to achieve 100% clean, clean renewable, non-carbon emitting energy by no later than 2035. So, doesn't exactly mirror the language of SB 100 and.
What, what, what word would you replace achieve with in order for it to mirror, mirror something like SB 100?
I mean, maybe you would say intends to meet the SB 100 2045 goals by 2035? That would be one way, one approach. Or you could just say clean energy generically. Intends to achieve, I don't know.
Yeah, I wanted to get away from the SB 100, because SB 100 includes the biofuels. So, I wanted to use this definition that we've just come up with. Can we do that?
I think so. It tends to achieve 100%.
Why can't we just keep, keep it as is?
Keep it as is?
Yeah.
That gets back to the Venn diagram that I showed you, that you'd end up with, you'd, most of the resources in your existing mix, you could no longer use.
Again, that situation.
Yes.
That's, that, that makes it a little bit too constrictive and restrictive, so.
So, you, you understand, however, the, the greater intent, perhaps the wording wasn't ideal here. What, and absent of using SB 100, which unfortunately would include, would, would restrict us in terms of the type of fuels that would be considered or sources or energy, what would you recommend that we worded as instead?
Well, I kind of like the suggestion of using the same wording as section two, that Mr. Garcia just read in that section as well. I think that might do the trick.
So, how would that sentence read? The city of Glendale intends.
To achieve 100%, and then, Mike, what do you have?
It would be 100% clean renewable, clean renewable, not, or non-carbon emitting energy, excluding new biofuel sources not already permitted or allowed in the city.
By 2035.
No later than 2035.
All right.
Those two should be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes it cleaner, too.
I think that's, I think that works in terms of consistency.
Absolutely.
You're the attorney, so you give us the green light on that. And I think that's the last item? Is there anything else that we're missing before we go on to the main event?
Want to just, we just have Christine read them again, and then.
Sure. Absolutely. Let's do that. Here we go.
Sorry, Christine.
Wish me luck and chime in if I miss something. Okay, so this is the Councilmember Bratman resolution.
The modification.
The modification.
Sure.
In the whereas, oh, gosh, these aren't numbered or anything, but the, the whereas clause regarding Grayson and Scholl project are carbon emitting, that would, so that's included. The whereas clause regarding the percentage of solar customers will exclude the wording regarding Southern California Edison, Pacific Gas and Electric, and San Diego Gas and Electric. The. The whereas clause that struck, that's stricken in Councilmember Bratman's version regarding city desiring to maintain its position as a leader in local clean renewable energy is put back in. In section two, the wording will say, "It's the policy of the city of Glendale that future investments in equipment and infrastructure to produce electricity to serve the needs of the city and utility customers will, to the maximum extent possible, be in clean renewable or non-carbon emitting resources excluding renewable biofuels not are already permitted," I guess, or in the portfolio.
Already approved or permitted.
Approved or permitted, okay. And then in section three, it will say, "The city of Glendale intends to achieve 100% clean renewable or non-carbon emitting resources excluding biofuel, renewable biofuels not already approved or permitted." And then in section four, the wording will keep, "The city of Glendale intends to adopt policies and practices." In sections, oh, okay, in sections five, six, and seven with regard to the timeline, the blank date is going to be revised out. So, it's going to be that staff is directed to prepare and present an RFP to the city council for its consideration within three months.
Or sooner.
And I'm trying to read my chicken scratching, I think with timelines and impacts for the council's consideration regarding like the various components of the analysis. In section seven, there was an addition regarding the analysis must include direct and indirect analysis regarding low-income customers, and if it has an impact, program options to mitigate. And I'm sorry, I didn't capture the language.
I read it to you again.
If I do have any email, please, thank you.
The analysis must include direct and indirect impacts to low and moderate income households. Should analysis conclude any negative impact, the report must also include program options to mitigate those negative impacts.
Thank you. So, that will be added to section seven. Section eight regarding the subcommittees will be removed and replaced with, staff shall present a monthly report to council regarding the progress on these matters. And then in attachment A, the final bullet regarding the plan shall consider electric system reliability is added back in.
Sure. And I think that the monthly reports, I wouldn't expect it to come back. I mean, this is all very fresh. It would, I don't know what the report would look like within a month, but I'd be fine with it coming back in two months. And then that would mean, in the third month, we would see the RFP.
And may I ask, are those reports, I didn't quite understand, is that presented in a council meeting or written reports, or?
I think initially, we should have it in a council meeting, and then afterwards, let's see how, let's see how it goes. It should be. I think, and, and as much as we can encourage as much transparency as possible, in the absence of having this committee comprised of, whether it's a consultant or it's council members, let's have it done openly. That would be my preference. Okay.
Oh, we need a motion on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, I will move that whole set of.
Modifications.
Modifications. Okay, thanks.
All right. There's been a motion, a second. Let's have roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian?
Yes. Thank you very much. It's a big deal, as I say. Congratulations. Next item, please.
Next item is Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grayson Repowering Project, GWP Power Supply Planning and Clean Energy Initiatives. One, resolution rejecting the sole bid received in response to Glendale Water and Power bid, specification number 3904, Unit 9 Separation, dispensing with further competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager or designee to negotiate and execute a contract with ARB, Inc., for the Grayson Power Plant, Unit 9 Separation, for an amount not to exceed $4,247,507, plus a 10% reserve for contingencies in the amount of $424,750. Two, resolution authorizing the general manager of GWP to utilize an alternative project delivery method for the engineering, procurement, and construction of the balance of site work for the Grayson Repowering Project. Three, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a professional services agreement with Wartzilla North America, Inc., for Phase 2 limited notice to proceed engineering services for the Grayson Repowering Project for an amount not to exceed $9,882,000, plus a 10% $988,200 reserve for contingencies. Four, motion authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute an amendment to professional services agreement number 800053 with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc., to increase the contract by an amount not to exceed $164,000 for environmental support services for the Grayson Repowering Project. Five, motion authorizing an amendment to professional services agreement number 8000847 with Black &amp; Veatch to increase the contract by an amount not to exceed $1,570,668, plus a 10% $157,067 reserve for contingencies for additional owners' engineering services for the Grayson Repowering Project. Six, motion authorizing an amendment to professional services agreement number 8000941 with Clean Power Consulting Partners to increase the contract by an amount not to exceed $150,000 for project management and professional support services for the Grayson Repowering Project. Seven, resolution of appropriation. Eight, motion to note and file the report. Nine, motion directing staff to prepare the necessary actions and approvals for council approval of the purchase and installation of five Wartzilla engines for the Grayson Repowering Project.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, thank you, Ms. Abadjan, city clerk, for patiently reading through all these items. And I appreciate council's willingness to, to entertain and, and consider all these items that we are asking for direction today. As you may recall, back on March 1st, 2022, this council, previous council, certified the EIR with alternative seven, modified alternative seven, and gave direction to staff to come back no, and I cite, no later than December, and tonight falls within, within that deadline. Since then, a number of things have changed, number of new developments in the industry, in the marketplace with our proposed programs. And that is why I thought it'd be best to report now, provide this report to you now for contract appropriations and in alignment with city council's direction. So, recent developments include, as you know, worldwide supply chain issues that have caused delays and cost increases across the board, tariff on Chinese-made products, although they're temporarily suspended, cost of borrowing is going up, as, as you have heard and, and read, higher interest rates for, for bonds that we intend to issue. You've heard previously, unfortunately, the virtual power plant proposal is no longer viable. The results of our energy efficiency measures, the Franklin and Walden, Walden programs, and the RFP that's been issued is out on the streets for proposals for up to 50 megawatts of DER. The, the deadline for submission is September 30th, as well as we provide an update on the results of our staff's meeting with LEDWP staff. All that said, we just wanted to paint a, a full picture for council with all the available options, including, frankly, a motion for Wartzilla engines if the city council is desirous of moving in that direction and give us a, a, a direction to, to move forward. And as well as the fact that we are presenting the limited notice to proceed for the engineering work for these Wartzilla engines. I'll get a little personal now. To be honest, I am getting very worried. This is one of the situations that keeps me up at night. I not only worry about climate change and what this world will look like for my three children, but I also worried that we are reaching a crisis point where we have to make a decision for the future of Glendale, for us to be able to, to provide reliable energy to our residents and businesses. I also wanted to emphasize and reassure city council and the public, regardless of the direction with the Wartzilla engines, that we will, GWP will not stop pursuing clean energy, any and all, clean energy, resources, programs, projects, less consumption, more conservation. As a matter of fact, rather, we'll pursue them based on the resolution that you just adopted. We'll pursue them more aggressively. We will strive to streamline processes to accomplish council's goals and visions for clean energy for the city in, in the years to come. To that point, as again was mentioned, we have retained the services of EcoMotion, consulting firm that have experience and expertise in clean energy that will help us achieve these goals in, in a faster pace than we have been able to do that. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mark Young, who's been waiting patiently for a brief presentation, not as long as the ones that you have experienced in the past and accustomed to. And then we'll open it up for questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. So, today's decision points are, are, it seemed like a lot in the resolution. So, I, I broke it down, and there's, there's basically four resolutions, the four decision points that we need to make today. The first one is to reject the sole bid and dispense with competitive bidding and negotiate and execute a contract with ARB for Number 9 Unit Separation. In preparation for decommissioning Number Units 1 through 8, we need to isolate Number 9 Unit, so we would need to do that regardless of what we do with Grayson, considering the rules of S, of the ARB 1135 rule. The second one was approve the alternative project delivery method for the engineer, procure, and construct for the balance of site in the event that we have two power islands. One was the Tesla battery, the other is the Wartzilla battery. Those are going to be standalone power islands. It's essential for us to have an EPC contractor for the balance of site that can incorporate both of those power islands into the infrastructure of Glendale. The third is to approve a limited notice to proceed to with the Wartzilla. The third is to approve a limited notice to proceed to with the Wartzilla for engineering services. Number four was to execute the amendments to the following contracts, StanTech for engineering services, Black &amp; Beach for owners engineer, and the Clean Power Consulting Partners for project management. Sorry. The power supply challenges that we're facing, Glendale? Is the ongoing uncertainty of the Grayson repower. We've been working on it for about seven years, and we've delayed maintenance on the existing project, the existing power plant. We have extending outages and ongoing outages. For example, the 8A generator has a ground in it, so we have to contemplate, depending on what happens tonight, what we're going to do with that, and that repair goes from like $170,000 to $1.7 million. These are the type of things that happen when the units and the infrastructure is sold. Number four, boiler tubes have obstructions in them, so right now, we're essentially rotor rooting, rotor rootering these pipes to clean them. Number five, superheater tubes need to be replaced, and all the deferred maintenance that we'll need to do in the event that we take no action. Another problem is the sunrun was terminated. The virtual power plant was a huge blow to us. We really needed to have that in our portfolio. That was 25 megawatts of a really cool project that I'm sorry that we don't have. The demand response is underperforming. I think that it needs to gain a foothold where people feel comfortable in being able to have somebody control their thermostats. I still have high hopes for it, but presently, it's underperforming. In the utility-scale energy, Elan Solar project that we're involved in with Los Angeles is a 15-month delay in getting energy out of that project because of supply chain issues, and conversely, there's been a 16-month delay in our Star Peak Geothermal project, and that's created a lot of hassle with us with regard to not only receiving the energy in order for us to have for load, but more importantly, in our RPS and in our clean energy portfolio. As we know, Los Angeles confirmed that they were not part of the solution. They didn't have any energy for us, and indeed clarified some situations that we'll go over a little later in the presentation. G, this isn't obvious, but we have to state it. GWP must plan to keep the lights on 24/7. We need sufficient power, so you can't just look at megawatts, you also have to look at megawatt hours. And what do I mean by that? What I mean by that is if a solar project is only producing solar and our peak is at nighttime, we can't just simply add megawatt numbers to come up with solutions. Sometimes the peak or the amount of energy on a specific problem, project, will not correspond to when we need the energy. Like I said before, it's imperative that we maintain N minus 1, N minus 1 reserves per Los Angeles's conversation that we had in March, and we have to do all these things while we're continuing to move in the clean direction. This is a chart that many have seen before, but I'll try to explain it a little bit clearer. On the left axis, it's the 0 to 400 is load. That's the amount of megawatt hours or the megawatts peak. On the horizontal axis, where you see HE1 through HE24, HE stands for hour ending. So HE1 starts at 12 o'clock midnight and it ends at 1 o'clock in the morning. The black line as the curve, that's the load of the line. So typically, what we do to make sure that we have enough energy is we take our resources and we stack them, and this is a resource stack, and you can see our net transmission is the blue line that's solid across. We have indicated that we would try to, at all costs, bring in 100% reliable renewable energy across our transmission lines, so that's the transmission line. Then you have Elan Generation, local DER, which is the Franklin and Willdan energy, the local virtual power plant with sunrun that no longer exists, the Magnolia Power Plant, Number 9 Unit, and you could see the brown area is the Tesla BES. What that is, is the discharge of that energy from the 75-megawatt, 300-megawatt-hour battery, and you can then see that Wartzilla, those five Wartzilla engines need to be turned on in order to meet load. There's one question that I'm sure everybody's dying to know the answer to. Why is there energy north of that line in the morning time? That energy is charging the battery in order for us to be able to discharge the Tesla battery. So the blue and green between 1 and 7 o'clock are charging the battery, and then we're discharging the battery at 11 through 1700 hours.
Mark, I think you meant Shoal Biogas as part of that resource.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my bad. Shoal is also in this in the chart. Sorry about that. You can see that it's a consistent light blue line across the whole, go back. Sorry, it's a consistent light blue line that goes across all hours of the day. Thank you, sorry about that. Like we said, LA is not the solution. On March 21st, two council members, city manager and myself, went to talk to Los Angeles, and we had a very in-depth conversation with them on potentially being able to assist us with not having to purchase thermal generation in order for us to, one, meet load and, two, meet it reliability with our contingencies. They made it very clear to us that not only do we have to maintain the N1 minus 1, we also have only 60 minutes of leaning on Los Angeles for the 80 megawatts of contingency that we purchased in the Baza. After 60 minutes, we'd be on our own and we would have to resupply that. So if we couldn't resupply it, what would we have to do? The political way of saying is we would have to readjust load and resources. And in plain terms, we would be turning off people's electricity in order for us to maintain that balance, and we're, obviously, we've only done it once in the history of Glendale that I know of, but that was because there was a problem with the transformer, not because there was a problem with supply. And to clarify, Los Angeles' position hasn't changed since 2017 or earlier. They were very clear on this for a very long time. Clean energy status. In 2017, we created an IRP in order for us to be able to minimize the 262-megawatt thermal generation option for the repower. Part of that IRP was to develop 50 megawatts of DER. So how we got the 50 megawatts of DER was we had approximately 10 megawatts of energy efficiency, approximately 10 megawatts of demand response, we had a 25-megawatt virtual power plant, and we were going to produce the remainder of that using local city-owned solar that was going to compile 50 megawatts. We took that 50 megawatts and we put it into our program, and that's how we were able to reduce our 262-megawatt thermal generation facility down to 93 with the 75-megawatt, 300-megawatt-hour battery. We're pursuing more DER. On May 27th, we put out the Clean Energy RFP. The proposals are due September 30th. Well, let me back up. We submitted directly to 200 firms, the California Municipal Utilities Association, Southern California Public Power Association, American Public Power Association, and the California Energy Storage Alliance. We're all giving this RFP so that we can get the broadest range of people interested in our RFP possible. The proposals are due September 30th, and we did that for a reason, because September 30th was chosen to account for the pending decision of the Federal Commerce Department investigation of the Chinese tariff. So we figured that because of the uncertainty, they were going to bake in a lot of additional pricing. So we were hoping that the tariff solution was going to be solved before our RFP was mandated to be published, and that's why it was September 30th. We're going to collaborate with EcoMotion. They're going to help lead the analysis of this DER, and they're going to then also, what we call, beat the bushes. So what are they going to do? They're going to look at our public benefits and all the local DER programs that we have. They're going to compare them to other California Moonies. They'll look at IOUs, they'll look at other utilities in the United States, and then look at it internationally. So we've asked for a list of things that we could then use, regardless of whether they fit or not, because we feel that if they don't fit today, it's possible that in a year or two or five, that they might actually apply to us in the future, so we want to have a list of possible DER options. The Grayson update. The Grayson. So why are we trying to push this so fast so now? I would argue that we're not really trying to push it fast. We've been working on it for a very long time, but we're running to a hard stop, and that hard stop is the AQMD Rule 1135. On December 31st, 2022, we have to have the application into AQMD to tell them what we plan on doing with our utility, and that includes fixing any of the units to comply with the new rules or to then allow them to be noncompliant, and then we would shut them down. The last day for a noncompliant unit to work would be December 31st, 2023. So you see, we're very close to those deadlines, which is why we keep pushing to get some resolution. The Grayson Power Procurement Status. So one thing, the first thing that we have to do is we have to have Number 9 Unit separate. Then we would have demolition site improvements, and that's going to come to us October 28th of 2022. The Tesla, the Tesla contract is almost final or nearly complete. The Wartzilla and LNTP Phase 2 is something that we're discussing today, and we need to have that engineering so that we don't lose any time in our timeline to get the repowering done. The Wartzilla EPC contract is on hold to determine how many engines that we would purchase. The Balance of Site EPC is being prepared as we speak, and that would probably, it would help us tremendously if we know what we're actually asking them to design. And staff is still working on trying to procure the needed energy between the demo and the go-live on the new plant. Well, this is probably the worst slide of the bunch. This is the project costs. Project costs are escalating due to supply chain, interest rates. We can see that the current forecast is about $493 million in direct costs. Tesla pricing has increased by 45%, and it's tied to a lithium index. That lithium index will change, and it will change until the day that we sign the contract. Wartzilla pricing has increased, but not at that rate. We see an increase of 25, 27% increase. The interest rates are also much higher for the bond costs, so we'll incur much more interest in borrowing the money. Supply chain is not only Glendale's problem, it's the whole world's problem, so it's not like it's something that we're doing that's actually causing this delay. The decision points. The Number 9 Separation. We put out a bid. Bid was technically non-responsive to the proposed modifications of the specs based on supply chain. So we're requesting to reject the sole bid, dispense with competitive bidding, and to negotiate and execute a contract with ARB. We had three vendors walk through the job, and only one person, and only one company replied. Fortunately for us, ARB is a company that we always do business with, and they do very good work for us. We have very good working relationship with them, and the bid price was in line with the engineer's estimate, so we feel very comfortable with ARB to do the work. The alternative project delivery method. The Balance of Site Engineer EPC contract will engineer, procure, and construct the systems necessary to connect the Tesla and the Wartzilla power islands to GWP. They will also be responsible for all other work, not included in the Tesla and Wartzilla scope of the work. They're essentially the first contractors on-site, and they'll be the last contractors off-site. Wartzilla's limited notice to proceed, now this is a big-ticket item, but it's also got a lot of variables in it. So in March, council modified the Grayson Alternative 7, directing staff to continue with the process, but hold off on procuring the engines till no later than December 2022. Due to the limited time, it's necessary to continue to do the engineer work so that the timelines don't slip for us to be able to get our new power plant up and running. So this is almost $10 million, and it's for five engines. So the trick here is if there's less engines, we would want to have less engines in the LNTP, because the work that's going to be done on five engines doesn't necessarily translate if there's going to be less engines. So we would like to have a firmer number on this in order for us to be able to move forward on it and not waste city funds. Professional services agreements. StanTech would be, we would ask for additional funding, and I won't talk about the numbers. Their environmental support, including air permitting. Black &amp; Beach is the owners engineer. We're asking for additional funds for them. And the Clean Power Consulting Partners, they're the project manager. So summary. So LA has confirmed that GWP needs to be self-sufficient. They can't help us, and we need to do what we need to do in order for us to meet load and to meet reliability. The loss of sunrun further complicates the energy supply stack. We were really counting on those 25 megawatts. GWP sent a letter of unanimous support to council for the repowering project, and an early decision was made on, it would be good to have an early decision made on the number of Wartzilla engines so that we can more accurately identify the LNTP. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. There are a number of callers, as well as cards that have been submitted. Does anyone want to ask a question right now, perhaps for clarification, before I call up speakers?
One or two.
Okay, we have Councilmember Ramon, you have one or two questions?
Yeah. This AQMD Rule 1135. Is there any possibility that we could appeal to AQMD to give us more time?
Well, I would say never, never say never, but we actually got six months, we actually got six months delay. It was, we were supposed to have this decision six months ago, so there was supposed to be an 18-month turnaround, and they gave us the capability of going to 12 months.
I mean, how would we go about that if, you know, from a 30,000-foot point of view, you would think that AQMD would prefer we use less fossil fuel than more? And if we really, it's a matter of, you know, we need time to build out these distributary resources? That's the problem we face. It takes time to build them out. Maybe they would be amenable to giving us more time to build that out, so we're not now investing in new fossil fuel. Do you think, you know, what would be the process to approach them? Have we done that? Have we talked to them recently? Is there something any of us can do? Is that an avenue?
This is not an answer that I like to give you. I don't know. I don't know, because if AQMD rules go into effect, there's zero pollution, because they'll shut the power plant down. So they're not concerned with meeting load, they're just concerned with air pollution. So in the event that they don't meet air quality standards, we are noncompliant and therefore wouldn't be able to run the units.
Okay. I mean, I think that's something we should come back to, whether there's one last-ditch effort we might be able to make with them. The other question is, why do we have to decide on that limited notice to proceed now? What would be the cost? Would there be a cost? Or in terms of money or delay? Or in terms of money or delay? If we waited till October to make that decision?
So there would be a delay. There would be a delay in time, and that's critical for us. But also, I believe the modification to Alternative Seven was that we would continue to move forward on this so that we wouldn't delay the repowering any longer.
Right. I'm aware of that. I'm just. What would it mean if we waited a couple of months? Waited for the RFP to be done, to see what we're getting out of the RFP? Waiting to see whether, you know, the work of EcoMotion, what that turns up? Waiting to see if there's something that comes out of the new Inflation Reduction Act that, you know, might completely change the landscape for us?
So the engineering would take 15 months from the date that we sign the contract. So if we were to then spend two-month delay, then I would assume that from today forward, it would be a 17-month process instead of a 15-month process. So that delay would just push our repower out further. And the further that we go out, the more scarce the energy is for us to be able to find energy to replace during the demolition and construction period. Diablo Canyon is still having issues where they're thinking about extending it a little bit. The state is deficient by 3,000 megawatts now, and as things start to fall off, it just gets worse. So we're desperately trying to get self-sufficient as fast as we can.
Okay. Well, we could take that up in discussion. I just wanted to ask a question.
Let's, anyone else? All right, let's go to the speakers. Cole Basemore. Please correct my pronunciation of your last name, Cole.
Yes, thank you. It's Basemore.
Basemore.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian, city council members, staff. My name is Cole Basemore, and I'm a resident of the Citrus Grove neighborhood in Glendale. I'm speaking today to encourage you to postpone your decision on purchasing the dirty carbon-emitting technology for the Grayson Repowering Project. Just today, President Biden signed the Inflation Reduction Act that includes more than $60 billion for onshore clean energy manufacturing in the U.S. This will help accelerate the deployment of clean energy technologies by increasing their availability and driving down costs, two factors that should be considered before making significant investments. Additionally, purchasing the dirty carbon-emitting technology may disrupt ongoing efforts to acquire clean energy solutions through GWP's distributed energy resources request for proposals. Lastly, the resolution from Agenda Item 8B this very evening offers an opportunity for Glendale to obtain substantial clean energy through distributed solar and storage. Please continue looking at clean energy solutions and do not buy more of the dirty carbon-emitting technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland Gedikin. And everyone will be given three minutes, hopefully.
Three minutes is fine. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian and council members. Thank you for the opportunity. There's a saying, "Hope for the best, prepare for the worst." And I don't know if it was meant to be, but today Agenda Item 8B was "hope." And that was great, and everybody communicated beautifully together and came to a consensus for the betterment of Glendale. But the next part is "prepare for the worst." I'd like to say "prepare for the minimum." And what GWP has proposed is to prepare for the minimum. I have been with this project since 2018. Originally, the project was to be 280 megawatts, and I was opposed to it, and I lobbied against it. But we wanted to get a number that is real, that is based on science and based on facts, not what I wanted to hear or what anybody else wants to hear. So the quest was for the right answer. And I believe GWP has come to the right decision with regards to Alternative Seven. Every opportunity to explore renewable was done. Every technology that was available, we reviewed. It's unfortunate Sunrun didn't work out, but that is part of the problem we are dealing with. A lot of these renewable energies are hopeful, but they're not ready. And it's good we have the hope, but it's important we are ready for the minimum. You know, questions keep coming up. You know, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? But there are timelines that need to be met. And it's not just the AQMD. We have requirements to meet at ADWP. You know, they're not going to support us. Energy demand is increasing, and I think with the Alternative Seven, we will have the minimum. And once we are comfortable that we have the minimum, then we can explore hope much better. We can explore whatever renewable is available much better. So I urge you today, just like you just discussed about hope and came to a consensus, everybody working together, you would work on coming to a decision today with regards to Alternative Seven. It is the minimum that Glendale needs. And I'm afraid with the increase of electrification for buildings and cars, that may not be enough. And I am hopeful, Item 8B that you just approved, will meet that additional demand. So hopefully, together, I don't know if it was divine intervention or just by design, but for some reason, "hope for the best and plan for the worst" is what came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gedikin. Let's go to the callers. And as of now, we have 15 callers? 19. All right. So let's get started. Three minutes, and hopefully people will limit their comments to two.
Okay. Our first caller is Jennifer Burdelet. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Burdelet, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. Since 2018, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce has supported Glendale Water and Power moving forward with the repowering of Grayson, of the Grayson Power Plant to provide the city of Glendale with energy reliability and independence and keep the lights on for our businesses and residents in the event of a major disaster or other power-related incident. Since that time, much work has been done by GWP, its partners, and concerned organizations and residents to increase the percentage of renewable energy sources to be used and reduce the cost for the repowering. We commend our city council and GWP for pursuing alternative clean sources of energy and for listening to the concerns of residents and others. In 2019, our Board of Directors voted again to support Glendale Water and Power moving forward with the repowering of the Grayson Power Plant as they continue to consider additional renewable and cost-effective sources of energy. We believe that with the amount of steady time and collaboration dedicated to the Grayson repowering effort, along with the condition of the existing equipment, now is the time to progress and ensure that Glendale will be ready and able to keep our businesses open and residents safe and powered in the event of a major disaster or in future power needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Danielle Limone. You have three minutes.
Hi. Thank you for taking my call. I'm just calling to say that I know there are a lot of extenuating circumstances that have been expressed, making a lot of the proposals for more clean energy at Grayson more difficult. But at the same time, I'm, you know, personally observing the increase in heat and the, you know, stifling heat that makes it almost impossible to go outside without being miserable. And, you know, that is related to climate change. And then we need to use more air conditioning and more power. And so we need to take this as an opportunity to invest in more clean energy so that we can stop this cycle or at least make it so that it's not as bad as it could be if we continue just, you know, as business as usual. Okay. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Our next caller is Nat Yance. You are online.
I'm an engineer here in Glendale. Look, we're staring down the barrel of climate change here. And, I mean, somebody's squeezing the trigger right now. You mentioned that earlier, though, and you're all correct. It's not about us agreeing and disagreeing on climate change being real. It's about deciding how quickly and how decisively we deal with it. There's been a lot of talk tonight about timelines, right? Well, the most important timeline is the one that will keep us and our children alive. If we want our food to keep growing, if we don't want people to start roasting, literally every metric ton of carbon we can eliminate helps, every single one. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Courtney Smith. Courtney, you are on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you for taking my call, members of the city council. My name is Courtney Smith. I'm a Glendale resident. I want you to support clean energy in Glendale. We should increase rooftop solar to 10% of customers, commit to 100% clean energy by 2035, and take other steps to avoid installing additional gas engines in Glendale. I urge the council to oppose the Grayson repowering proposal. We need a rapid transition to clean energy now to avoid catastrophic climate impacts. I actually just learned that a few days ago, there was a new study by Science Advances that came out that shows that climate change has doubled its chances of a disastrous mega-flood happening in California in the next four decades, targeting the Central Valley. While it feels overwhelming, there's a chance to reverse the damage done by fossil fuel consumption. But that can only happen if every local government does right and eliminates burning fossil fuels during this critical stage. Adding gas-burning equipment is the long way to go. If Glendale is a leader in clean energy, Glendale must make decisions like a leader in clean energy. Oppose Grayson and commit to clean energy. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Jackie Eco. You are on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, it's Jackie Eco. I have been a Glendale resident for 10 years. It is 2022. We live in one of the sunniest cities on Earth. Why didn't we already have solar panels on every roof 10, 20, or even 30 years ago? So today, we must move towards solar energy because we must reduce asthma and heart attack-causing pollution, and also because we literally live in earthquake country. Most of the thousands of deaths in the huge 1906 San Francisco quake were from fire. The entire city burned because of the foolishness of putting gas lines on top of fault lines. And we are certainly overdue for the big one, as we all know. Yes, they installed the gas lines back then. In total, those fires burned the city down for four days and four nights. And yet, over 100 years later, we still haven't learned from that nightmare? This is shameful. We must do better. Our best hope for a brighter future is to work out any challenges we have with installing solar and make citywide solar happen right now. At least it should be free for people who can't afford it. We need to just figure it out and just keep working on it until we solve this problem and install solar here right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Paul Beryl-Zheimer. Paul, you're on air, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor Kusakian and council members. Once again, I'm Paul Beryl-Zheimer, a longtime resident and homeowner in Glendale. Please reject the push to accelerate the installation of five gas engines and any other carbon-emitting power source, and instead push GWP to seriously develop plans for the implementation of distributed solar generation and other renewable and carbon-neutral energy sources, including pursuing a new virtual power plant plan and including mitigation of any potential added costs for renters, especially, and first off, by making sure that apartment buildings and other multifamily homes are supported in adding photovoltaic panels to keep their energy costs low. Climate change is the most serious threat humanity has ever faced. As I said in the previous item, actions taken on a municipal level can have much greater effects negatively or positively than anything that any of us can do as individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Devon. You are on air, and you have three minutes.
My name is, hi. My name is Devon Smith. I'm also a resident of Glendale. And I very strongly encourage you to support clean energy in Glendale. And please take whatever steps you can to avoid installing additional gas engines in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Vivian Kanahyan. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Hi there. I'm Vivian Kempton. I'm a 40-year resident of Glendale. And I don't envy the position that our leaders are in. I know that this is a difficult decision. You're balancing a growing population against shrinking resources. I get it. I'm not an expert when it comes to the technicalities of how much power we need and how that demand gets built. So I'll keep it really simple and echo what many people have said, which is to please, make a heartfelt plea to you all to decide with your heart where your heart leads you with this because there are going to be growing pains. You know, we have a growing population, as I said, and we need to learn to do more with less and learn to live with nature and not against nature. And one comment regarding the gas plant is that we are facing increasing amounts of water. We don't have enough clean water, and more and more of the planet is becoming desertified. And we can see it all around us. I can see it having lived in Glendale for 40 years. No more frogs, no more worms, no more soil. It's just dirt and dust. So in order to bring that back, we need to cut back on the fossil fuel use, if not completely eliminate it, and move on to cleaner energy because no water, no life. That's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jackie Gish. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jackie Gish, and I'm a resident of Glendale for more than 60 years. My comment spans both items 8B and 8C. In the packet, GWP put the following statement in the resolution for 8B. Whereas 2,270 of GWP's 88,000 customers, or approximately 2.5% of GWP customers currently have solar energy with such solar installations generating 23.7 megawatts or 6.8% of Glendale's peak load of 346 megawatts. However, for item 8C in the tables of peak power and daily energy needed and resources available, and in the worst daily slide that Mark Young presented, virtually no solar power appears to help GWP's power needs, neither in the resources, nor in the reduction of loads, nor in the power needed during a day. And there is a comment that there is only 3 megawatts of new distributed energy resources now, so not even counting the 23.7 megawatts of solar. Glendale only needs additional power in the case of N minus 1 plus N minus 1 minus 1. This would be a case of emergency. Can Glendale plan for this with additional batteries? Hopefully charging with additional solar? Or as a fallback, charging with operating Unit 9 more hours under these emergency conditions? Can Glendale plan for this by having enforceable rules to cut back on power use during such times, especially by slight increases in temperatures for non-vulnerable people, by not allowing pool pumps to operate during peak times? Much the same way as we have water restrictions now. Building new, expensive, polluting power plants, and I mean Shoal and Grayson, in Glendale will just make Glendale a worse place to live and hurt our planet as well. This money should be used for a clean, non-carbon-emitting, resilient supply of power and energy, that is solar and batteries. Even if the solar and batteries are owned by GWP's customers, they will still reduce GWP's costs. Costs for importing power, costs for natural gas for Grayson Unit 9, and capital, bond, and operating costs for Grayson and Shoal. And GWP could use these savings to invest in more solar and storage on public buildings, more batteries to store customer-owned solar or other energy for use at peak time, and to incentivize more customers to invent. to incentivize more customers to invent, invest in solar and storage. So really, if you invested in more storage right now, you could change that graph that you have and not have to use Wartzilla or Shoal at all and use power with excess-
Jackie, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Um, next is Mike Borisov. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, city council members. My name is Mike Borisov, and I am the ex-associo student commissioner for the Glendale Sustainability Commission, so I am here today to express my own personal views as a Glendale resident. I appreciate the opportunity to give them to comment today. I'm calling to support GEC's Glendale solar solution. I would not like to see the proposed Grayson Power Plant be fitted with polluting gas-burning equipment. I would like to see the city invest in solar panel installations, battery stations, and renewable power-related incentives and subsidies. Let's work together to create a greener and safer Glendale for all by becoming 100% clean energy by 2035. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Teresa Chang. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Teresa Chang. I'm calling as a representative with the Sierra Club. First of all, thank you so much to the council for your hard work tonight, and congratulations on the managed setting historic goal to achieve 100% clean energy by 2035, and thank you for the opportunity to give comment tonight. Glendale should not become the last city in California to put in any new gas-fired power equipment. Voting on most of the items under 8C would mark a significant step toward the ultimate purchase and installation of the Wartzilla engines, and would move the city to spend another $10 million on Grayson, on top of everything Glendale has already spent on this project. A few weeks ago, the governor sent a public letter to the California Air Resources Board directing them to model a pathway to 100% clean energy that would never build new gas capacity in California again. If Glendale buys this equipment, it would be a huge disservice to ratepayers, as the gas plants would become a stranded asset, especially in light of the governor's accelerated climate proposals to get to 90% RPS by 2035, 95% RPS by 2040, and like I mentioned at the top of my comment, the historic 100% clean energy by 2035 goal. Lastly, I- now that there have been conversations about retrofitting the Wartzillas in the future to burn hydrogen, I just want to make clear that there is no infrastructure that exists today that would be able to deliver hydrogen to Glendale, and it is not clear that it will ever be available to be delivered into the LA basin. Even if there was additional costly retrofits to burn hydrogen, would only further increase costs for the city. Burning hydrogen would also raise new issues about air quality, because burning hydrogen can release six times worse nitrogen oxide than burning gas. The city of Glendale does not need this new gas equipment to meet its energy needs. There are safer, cleaner, and more affordable ways to meet the city's energy needs than new gas units. And the rooftop and solar storage motion passed tonight is one of them. Transmission solutions with LADWP could be another. I really believe GWP staff needs to double debt and get serious about clean energy and take real swift action on clean energy, instead of continuing to invest time and energy in more fossil fuel infrastructure. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Kate Unger. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, uh, thank you, city council. Um, I, of course, had to speak on this item. Um, GWP has presented an optional motion to move forward with the Wartzilla engines, but a decision to move forward today isn't compelled, and I urge you to hold off, of course. Why? Because we need to be able to tell the future generations that we did everything we possibly could to reduce our climate impact. Alternative seven, five Wartzilla units um would generate nearly 60,000 metric tons per year of carbon dioxide equivalent. Um, that to offset the amount of carbon for that engine would be, or for the five engines, would take 1 million trees to be planted and grown for 10 years. For each of the engines, that's 200,000 tree saplings grown for 10 years. But we need all the trees we can plant to offset the existing carbon in the atmosphere, of course, because we need to not only stop adding emissions, we need to draw down. Every ton of greenhouse gas is added and moves us in the wrong direction, makes the solution to the climate emergency less attainable. So please, keep in mind that the seventh-generation principle, the decisions we make today should make the world sustainable for seven generations into the future, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Tom Edinger. Tom, you're on air and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, this is Tom Edinger. I'm a 44-year resident of Glendale. Earlier uh this year, Councilman Brodmann asserted GWP could rely on Los Angeles to cover our required electrical reserves. In March, members of the city council met with LA and were told that LA would not cover our reserves. However, this information has never been made public and has been withheld from us until the most recent GWP commission meeting. So we knew in March that there- that there were no viable alternatives to the Grayson-Wartzilla engines to be able to cover load in the city, and we have wasted five months in making the engine decision that would let GWP move forward. Today, Governor Newsom has put out a proposal to allow Diablo Canyon Nuclear to run at least to 2029. He knows we're short on power in this state. We need to move forward with Grayson. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Lisa Reynolds. Lisa, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, I am a 33-year Glendale resident. Please stop stalling this project. Please know that this city, its residents, its businesses need reliable power. We are a growing city. There is an increase in electric vehicles. Just solar and battery programs that we think might solve our problems will not be solutions to our problems. I want reliable power. I don't want to just rely on these programs and have my rates go up and hope that these are the only viable options. How many times have we been told that we are in dire straits? We don't live in a third-world country. I am not okay with having rolling blackouts, and we will have blackouts. Please vote to move this project forward and not come up with alternatives that will stall this even more. We are a green city and moving towards green energy. We have to have a foundation in place. Think about the hospitals, the schools, and residents on medical equipment that aren't calling in, those that cannot participate in the ER programs. Listen to the GWP commissioners and to the Chamber of Commerce that just called in. These people represent your customers. Please consider this repowering project and continue to pursue solar and battery while you're doing the repowering project. Think of all the electrical vehicles we have to support. Where will that energy come from? We have to plan for emergencies and contingencies and earthquakes and storms. Each time you stall this project, it costs more, it takes longer. Only 10% rooftop solar and ER programs are not the answers. We need a full package of reliability. Doing just one thing is not the answer. If you want to compare us to other cities, they all have repowered power plants that have set foundations, and yet we don't have any more, and we have more investments in clean energy. The facts are set forth. Please vote for reliability, vote to repower, and move forward. If we don't repower, this will be Glendale's demise. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Samantha Abrahimi. You are on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I've been a resident of Glendale my entire life. I'm a 30-year-old millennial who understands that, yes, in a perfect world, we'd be completely green, and our infrastructure would be in great shape. Reality check is that there isn't, that is not the case. Glendale is home to businesses, residents, that need reliable power. We have three hospitals, senior care centers, hospices, not to mention schools, and businesses that need reliable power. Do not cross our fingers that their power won't go out, especially during the hot summer months. Stop kicking the can down the road and listen to the GWP professionals that have been working on this project for more years than I'd like to admit, because this should have been approved a very long time ago. Look at the price we're going to have to pay now, because the decision wasn't made back then. GWP has been saying that they're moving towards green energy and have provided proof countless times, yet council has a hard time doing what they were voted in to do, which is make a decision. Figure it out and give Glendale reliable power. Listen to the staff, professional consultants, GWP commission members, and most importantly, your city's needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Abadjan, I just want to mention that there's still, I believe, seven more callers or so, correct?
Um, yes, we have seven more callers.
All right, so at this point, I don't think we're going to, I- I won't take any more callers. We'll listen to the callers that are on hold, but I believe anyone who's been following this issue has had ample time to call in and wait on hold. Um, and we're going to hear from a lot of members of the public. We'll probably go on to being close to an hour of public comment. So let's listen to these seven final callers, and then we'll deliberate. Thank you.
Okay. Um, our next caller is Ryan Allen. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Brian Allen. Unfortunately, I am a laryngitis and me with an electoral larynx. I'm calling to let council know that I support GWP's plan to repower Grayson. I'm sorry you have delayed this project for four years, as the cost is now the same it would have been four years ago, and we would add more power. Now, the green revolution is coming, but I want to keep the light and my medical equipment running, and if you don't do this, blackouts and brownouts are coming to Glendale, just like you invent your own utilities. So please, repower Grayson and put the engine at Shoal Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is John Weiner. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I apologize for the earlier mix-up. My name is John Warner, and I am your Glendale Water and Power Utility Operations Center Electrical Superintendent. I'm a second-generation GWP employee. I have been working with the utility for almost 32 years. I started my career at Grayson Power Plant. Still to this day, I speak with many work-related issues, and this plant needs to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Steve Pruitt. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi, um, I'm a 32-year power industry professional and fifth-year Glendale. As a fellow resident of Glendale, California, in the US of A on this planet Earth, I'd like to point out that I feel the same heat. I inhale the same pollution, and I believe the same science that the opponents of the Grayson-Wartzilla option do. What reasonable person doesn't want clean power as soon as possible? Most importantly, we all agree that not one of us wants blackout. I agree with every sentiment I have heard tonight. So does Mr. Young, and so do all of you. So what's the issue? While I share the opponent's passion for clean energy, I cannot share their demand, and neither should you. You have been more than patient and tried harder than most cities, but if the technology is not, it is failures and underperformance of renewable effort, demand response, distributed energy resource build-outs, and the recent abandoned virtual power plant efforts that were aggressively pursued as early as 2018 have resulted in pretty much nothing. It is clear, after hearing endless calls for only clean power, that Grayson opponents do not have any solution, only opposition, opposition that is in too much. Glendale is out of time. Grayson repowering began in June 2015, when the city council directed GWP to proceed with the 250-megawatt Grayson Plan. Fast forward to today, Grayson will go offline one and a half years from now. The simple math is brutal. Without Grayson, Glendale has only 216 megawatts of total available power, and in the summer, its straight load is totally over. That's a lot less, and that equals blackout. The simple math makes it clear. Blackouts will occur unless Glendale can secure the assistance of other utilities, which have no obligation whatsoever to anyone but serve their own right payers. As you can see, these delays from all of these renewable contemplations have now placed Glendale in a very weak negotiating position. We cannot wait any longer. These blackouts will be on this city council and the recent city council.
Our next caller is Larry Morehouse. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, council. Uh, I've been following the replacement of Grayson ever since I retired in 2007. When I retired, I told GWP that they need to start replacing Grayson. Now, here we are, 2022. I agree with every recommendation that Mr. Young has made tonight, and the city council needs to realize that if you don't start now, you're going to have extensive blackouts in the city. The other thing that I wanted to ask Mr. Young is, he didn't mention in his presentation of the loss of power coming out of Hoover Dam because of the water situation, and I think that needs to be discussed. So my recommendation is approve uh this project immediately and get it done as fast as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jack Woolworth. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello, mayor and city council. As a 27-year resident of Glen Oaks Canyon, I, like many of my fellow Canyon residents, don't want to see any gas-burning power plants in the city, and especially not one that GWP claims to be burning so-called renewable methane at Shoal Canyon landfill. Please put all resources into building non-carbon-emitting power generation, such as rooftop solar. The technology is there. Stop the fear mongering. Let's stop building gas plants in our city today. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Seda Karapetian. You're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I've lived in Glendale for over 30 years, and I'm calling today to urge this council to approve the Grayson repowering project. My medical condition relies on electricity 24/7, and I know I'm not alone. Glendale residents need reliable and affordable power. Also, in any disaster, our number-one resource is going to be our own power plant, not to mention our own landfill, but that's another topic. I trust the professionals here from GWP. Mr. Young is talking about how this is something that should not be left to decide later. The more we delay this project, the more it costs us. It seems to me that one, that no one is against clean energy, especially not the staff at GWP. This is about making the responsible decision for the entire city with the resources you have at hand now. Thank you.
Our final caller is Ben Ipekchen. Uh, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. You're on air, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ben Ipekchen. I'm a Glendale resident, and I'm calling to comment on the fact that if AQMD has already allowed one extension, it would stand to reason that they would approve an additional extension. And considering it seems GWP hasn't asked a question for an additional extension, it feels like council's not playing with a full deck in making this critical decision, and I'd like to see council equipped with all the information. It doesn't seem like a big lift to request the extension. I'd like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's the last caller, right?
That's the last caller.
Okay. So we've heard from the public, uh, we've heard from staff. I will now uh turn to my colleagues to see what comments, questions. Um, well, is everyone okay just powering through this, or does anyone need a break? All right, let's, all right, let's go through this. I- I just wanted to ask, I want to make sure that everyone has taken their restroom break, gone to drink a water.
Don't shoot.
Um, okay. Hour is late, I understand. Everyone just, uh, it's, it's all right, Mr. Yidikin, please. Um, all right, so with that, who would like to go first?
All right. I can make some comments.
All right.
I can make some comments.
Councilmember Satrian.
So a couple of things. I had asked staff why this item was coming today, and I was told that it was just going to be an update report and that we have the option to make decisions, not make decisions, but there wasn't necessarily a need for us to make them, and they weren't on a timeline beyond the December one that was placed on, on staff from council. I understand that the RFPs are coming back September 30th. And the, I guess the demolition inside is October 28. I would love for us to be able to review the RFP before making a decision. I don't want to waste money in starting engineering work if we're going to possibly change the number of engines. I know that we just hired EcoMotion, and they're just getting to work on this. I've had conversations with folks at the Colorado Governor's Office and Department of Energy. A couple of recommendations that I got was to talk to the National League of Cities and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. My understanding is that GWP is a member of the National Public Power Association, which actually endorsed, endorsed the Inflation Reduction Act that President Biden signed today. I want to kind of go over the amounts that we, that are out there. And it's not just the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed today. There was obviously the bipartisan infrastructure bill. I was told that these between the American Public Power Association, the National League of Cities, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, we could easily get a list of funds that are, grants that are available for the projects that we're looking for within two- to three-week period. And I just want to kind of go over some of the, the buckets. In the Inflation Reduction Act, there's $260 billion for energy transition. There's $14 billion for residential efficiency improvements. There's $22 billion for residential. And red, I'm sorry. $128 billion for wind-solar storage tax credits. Manufacturers' tax credits at $37 billion. Clean vehicles, 20, 12 billion. Biofuels, 6 billion. And then on the bipartisan infrastructure bill, there's about $80 billion left for energy transition, which include advanced reactor programs, nuclear credits. Grid enhancements have a $28 billion amount available. Hydrogen hubs and demonstrations have $9.5 billion. And I can go on and on, but I know that some of the features include making sure that we're also covering the cost to repairs as we transition into clean energy. And so my, my request would be, or for, for us to possibly have a discussion on if there are items that we can move to, to help GWP move forward, including the separation of Engine 9. I'm okay with that. I would love for us to be able to see what proposals we get and base our decision off of that. And again, I'm not kicking the can down the road. We're talking about a month, month-and-a-half period and before the original December deadline.
All right.
If I could, maybe to simplify some things. We have, I'm looking at this decision point chart. Maybe you can put that back up on the screen. We have one, two, three, four, five things. Just to kind of clear the deck a little bit, I wonder if we have a consensus to authorize the Unit 9 separation work. I don't think that's controversial. The alternative project delivery method, don't think that's controversial. And the award, awarding the contract amendments for StanTech, Black &amp; Veatch, and Clean Power Consulting. Can we kind of move those off the table? And then we can, because then what I want to get to is I really want to talk about, you know, the Wortzilla limited notice to proceed and, and this last one on whether to stay the course.
So it's 8C1. One, two, four. Five, and six.
Or is.
Black &amp; Veatch. Yeah, so one is the separation, two is the alternative project mention, four would be StanTech, five, five is Black &amp; Veatch, and six is Clean Power.
Okay. I'm just trying to clear the desk.
I, I truly appreciate that. So was there, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, and it has been seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Clerk Abadjan, there is a motion, and as Councilmember Bratman said, he's trying to clear the deck, and we appreciate that. Motion for 8C1, 2, 4, 5, and 6.
One, two, four, five, three. I want to come back to that.
Wait, but.
Yeah.
If we, can I, can I interject before?
Councilmember Satrian.
My understanding was that 5 and 6 would have to be contingent also on Number 3. Can, can staff correct me if I'm wrong on this?
This is a time and material contract, so if you approve it and we didn't have work for them, then we wouldn't be spending any money for them. So there is various work that needs to be done in order for us to keep moving forward, but it's not completely dependent on 3.
So in other words, Mayor Kassatian, Councilmember Satrian, the numbers 4, 5, and 6, the contract amounts, you are correct, are based on the limited notice to proceed in the amount of $10 million with that scope. But like Mr. Young mentioned, these are the maximum amounts. So if we don't use it, if we don't, if we reduce the scope for the limited notice to proceed for Wortzillas, this will be affected some, but the monies will be there, and it's not a loss. Does that make sense?
No, walk me through it again.
So if you look at, if I may, if you would look at page 17 of the staff report, it lists out the work that Black &amp; Veatch would be doing, not all of which pertains to Wortzilla. So some of it does, other elements do not. So the work that doesn't pertain to the Wortzilla limited notice to proceed would, a lot of it still be work that needs to move forward. For example, Unit 9 separation support. They prepared the design for that, so we would want them involved in that in particular. But there's various other elements they could still work on.
Okay, so.
So I guess, if I may interject, I apologize. Your concern is that it's a package deal, and I believe staff is saying it's not. We approved the whole amount, but it doesn't necessarily mean we spend the whole amount.
Right, so we can approve it, and then if we don't, you know, we don't move on 3, then you won't spend the entire amount. Okay.
Okay. So there has been a motion and a second for 8C1, 2, 4, 5, and 6. May we have a roll call on those?
Yes. Councilmember Satrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kassatian?
Yes. Councilmember Bratman, back to you.
So, you know, I don't want to get into a whole lot of detail. We've been over this so many times. So I think you all know, the last thing I want is to preside over a decision to invest in more fossil fuels. I don't want that. I don't think any of us want that. I do believe that, well, first, let me say, you know, we started off back in 2016 or 2017 with a project, 260 megawatts, and we've made good progress. So let's, you know, let's commend ourselves for where we are today compared to where we were. It's, it's a lot better. Okay? I did have a hope that we could find a path to not having to add any of these Wortzillas, especially when I heard that we had obtained another 73 megawatts of transmission. And when we had landed the ELAN project, I thought there was scope at least to reduce the number of Wortzillas significantly. We've had many, many, many discussions, Mr. Young and I, and all of us. And, you know, and then there've been some other developments since then. There's been the VPP as we know. So at this point, as much as I would like to believe it, I don't think there is a path to zero gas. I just don't think there is. At the same time, I don't think we need five Wortzilla engines. I think there is opportunity to reduce that by doing some of the things that we committed to do here. And we know that the Wortzillas won't be in place till 2027? Or 2026?
I thought it was 26.
26, okay. Let's say 26, sorry. It's the transmission that comes on in '27, so 26. So that's what, three years, three-and-a-half years, right? We can do a lot in that period of time with clean energy, with solar on our, on our buildings, and we can do a lot. So I really truly believe, after looking at all the evidence, after all the discussions we had, I don't think we need five Wortzilla engines. And I don't think this council, at least I, will not support five Wortzilla engines. So somewhere between, you know, 1 and 4, I guess you could say, somewhere in between there. Now, we held off in March because we wanted to do two things. We wanted to make a last-ditch effort with LA DWP, and we wanted to go out and look again at clean energy resources that we could bring in. And that's why we did the RFP, okay? The LA situation, I mean, we could, you know, go back and forth, but I think right now it's kind of a dead end. I don't think they're going to help us. I don't think they're happy with us, whatever. Maybe we're not happy with them. Anyway, it is what it is. I think that's off the table. At least, you know, we need to take it off the table for now. The RFP, we still don't know. We don't know what's going to come out of that exactly. We also brought on, you know, EcoMotion, and, and we don't know what, what they're going to come up with. So I don't think we have the full picture. So what I'm thinking is, I also, like, I agree with, with Councilmember Satria. I don't want to spend a whole lot of money on engineering for a project of five Wortzillas, when we know that we're not going to approve five Wortzillas. But I want to keep the ball moving forward. We are running out of time. We are running out of time, right? And, and I'm looking at the bigger, the bigger goal is for us to get off of fossil fuels entirely by 2035, for us to electrify buildings, electrify vehicles, do all these other things we're talking about doing. That's the, that's the big objective, is to reduce our fossil fuel use. Between now and then, I think we're going to have to make some sacrifices and compromises. So you would think I'm the last person that would say this, but I've, I've, I mean, I'm a realist. I'm a realist, and I've always said I'm not going to be ideological about it. So my thought would be, let's go ahead with the limited notice to proceed, but not with five engines. Let's do it with three engines. Okay? That way, we're moving, moving forward. And we can take a little bit of time to look at what comes out of that RFP. I don't think the situation is going to change fundamentally between now and a couple months from now. I don't think so. But let's, let's do what we said we're going to do, which is we were going to look at, you know, additional resource that we might get out of the RFP. Let's do that. Let's come back in two months. Will we have, will we have good answers on the RFP in two months?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor City Council, Councilmember Bratman. So the deadline for submission of the proposals is September 30th. That's a month and a half.
Okay.
In two months, we can bring you a list of proposals, not having had the opportunity to review them in depth and be able to provide a recommendation to council. So we're going to need more time. If council's desire is for us to vet these out, the proposals, make sure that they're feasible, workable, financially, applicable to our needs, we're going to need more time than that.
Okay, end of October?
I think that's workable, yes.
I mean, let's come back as soon as, as soon as it's practical, as soon as we have some sense of what the opportunity is from that. Let's come back, and then we'll make a final decision. But let's move forward with the limited notice to proceed. I don't want to just sit on that. We've got, we're running out of time. But we're not making a decision on, on buying the units. That's what I'm saying.
I understand that, but if you are committing to 3, and then if it changes to 2, if it changes to 4, if it changes to 1, then what you're doing is making them go and do the work all over again. What is the number 3 based on?
It's based on a finger in the air to some extent, but it's a feeling that we're not going to do 3. We're going to do some. I'm trying to split the difference. I'm trying to find a place where I think we're going to end up landing and not, not waste time. Not going to do 5.
And if I can ask Mr. Young, thank you. Can we make it with 3 Wortzillas? Or should we maybe go to 4, but not 5? Maybe 6, huh?
I'm not a biased person, but I am biased here. Obviously, 3 will, will make work. I feel if we had more, we would be more comfortable with expansion of EV. But I also believe that with the new DER and the new technologies and things like that, that we, we have a fighting chance of being able to be very successful in this new RFP. So if that were the case, and we had 3, 3 of the Wortzillas and the battery, I think we have, we have, are highly motivated to make sure that those DER programs work, because we would have, we would have to meet load with those, so.
You'd like to have 5, but how about 4, Councilmember Bratman? How about 4?
That's, that's a step too far.
Well, if.
Again, I, I wouldn't have no issue with 3 if the number, if, if we're looking at the proposals, and that's what, that's what it requires for us. But, you know, to make a policy decision or for us to invest money and base that decision now on just, you know, finger to the wind, I mean.
Well.
Well, we've got Mr. Young's.
Yeah.
Mr. Young doesn't know what proposals are out there at this moment.
I understand, but we know it's not going to be 5. We know it's not going to be 0.
Let me just interject here for one moment. I'd like to recognize the city manager who'd like to make a comment. And then I'd like to recognize Councilmember Najarian, because he was trying to jump in, and then we can go back to Councilmember Bratman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make a clarification, the results of the RFP proposals, at best, will culminate, at best, maximum 50 megawatts. So we are certain of that level that, again, at best, we can achieve. So then you compare it to how do we meet load with the best-case scenario of having 50 megawatts of DER?
All right, Councilmember Najarian.
So these are my thoughts on, on getting a successful RFP. I don't think we're going to get 50 megawatts. Let's not forget what happened with Sunrun, that a company that we negotiated with exclusively, one of the largest, if not the largest, solar photovoltaic panel installer in the country, could not make it go at 50. We said, "Let's go to 25." They said, "Well, let's see if we can do it." They came back and said, "We cannot make it go." But we said, "Hey, Biden's going to take these tariffs off the Vietnamese and the Chinese-made panels." And they said, "We cannot make it go." Furthermore, we've already stated that a lot of our commercial and city-owned sites are going to be picked up by our own efforts. We are not going to get 25 megawatts on this RFP. I can guarantee you, we are just not going to. So I think we need to plan on that. Furthermore, even if we got an RFP, a proposal, look how long it took us to negotiate with Sunrun. And this was one company that we were all in on, and it took months and months. So nothing is going to happen before December. So nothing is going to happen before December. Let's also keep in mind, I'm not going to get into the LADWP issue, but let's keep in mind that these Wartzilla engines are going to be fully hydrogen available by what year? Mark, in the report, it said in 10 years or 15 years, they'll be 100% hydrogen capable. And running them on hydrogen is not that big of a deal. It's a matter of changing the jetting, changing the orifices, changing some of the timing issues on the ignition in there. One of the callers says, oh, we're not going to get any hydrogen infrastructure in the LA basin. And that's not true. We know that Southern California Gas has a hydrogen plan to bring in. We know that cities like Lancaster, Lancaster was, was raised, and I was speaking to the city manager, they are, and the, at the Japanese consulate's farewell event, they have self-contained hydrogen generating units. So I think when we say Wartzilla engine, we're going to be looking at a, what was our definition, non-carbon? I forgot what we eventually settled on. Ms. Godinez, non-carbon, whatever that was, the most strict version, the, the little inner circle on your Venn diagram?
The non-carbon emitting, yeah.
That's what we're going to be ending up with by the time these things are installed, and we run them a few years. At the same time, we're going to be ramping up with our solar, which we are committed to provide pursuant to our latest manifesto, if I can use that term, but only in the good way. So I sort of see somewhere between three and five. I was hard on five back in March, Mr. Brotman, and, and I blinked. I said, you know what, if there's a chance for us to power the city with anything less than five, let's give it every possibility. And, you know, chips are falling a little different way than we all hoped they would. I'd like to see something between three and five. I can come off of five. I'd feel a little more comfortable for the, the residents and our reliability if we had four, but that's where I am now, and that's part of our kitchen, making the cake.
Sure. Councilmember Brotman, did you want to respond to that, or?
No.
I just wanted to give the floor back to you, because I wasn't sure if you had finished your comments, if not.
You want me to?
Sure.
First of all, first of all, does Mr. Young have to?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I believe that the Wartzilla engines will be capable of burning 25% at the time that we get them. They haven't developed 100% yet, so I'm not, I'm not sure what it will take to get to 100%, but then again, Mitsubishi, Siemens, GE, we're not sure how they're going to get to 100% either. So I do know that when we get this engine, it'll be 25% capable, which falls in line with the gas companies' project of being able to, to blend hydrogen and natural gas.
I must have misread that, but I, I stand corrected if I misspoke.
And that was my understanding as well, that they wouldn't be 100% hydrogen efficient. But I don't know if there's anything else out there that can. Councilmember Divine.
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank all the callers and those that sent emails, those that were here earlier, and are some are still here at 10, almost, well, past 10:30. Thank you all for the input. We all appreciate that very much, and we know how passionate you are about all this. I also want to commend Councilmember Brotman for, for coming to this, this place where you are now, and I, I know it's not easy for you, but, you know, this council, our mantra has always been that we want to provide clean, reliable, and affordable energy to our residents. That's our responsibility. And we talk about a crisis, and a lot of people tonight have talked about the climate crisis, et cetera. Our municipality, our city, is in a crisis right now. We have, we are limping along with one unit, unit nine. And if something would go wrong with that unit, and if we don't repower Grayson, then we will be subjected to blackouts, because we do not have the accessibility of bringing in, transmitting energy into our city. And so that makes this project, and as hard as it is for Councilmember Brotman and for me, to swallow using fossil fuels, I'm not, I'm not for that either, you know? And I'm not against solar, I'm for solar. I'm the one, I suggested that we do our own solar virtual, virtual power plant after Sunrun bowed out. But there are consequences to that, too. Solar is not the end-all, be-all. There are a lot of other ways that we can produce energy in our city. I talked to one person, and, you know, we have been kicking the can down the road now for eight years, and I talked to one person who said that she was hoping that Caltech would have come up, while we have been postponing and postponing, that Caltech would have come up with a technology that would provide us with a solution. And guess what? They haven't. They haven't. So until technology catches up with where we are in this city, I think repowering Grayson, putting these Wartzillas in, and I know Mr. Young is, is being very liberal. I think he, he knows in his heart that we need more in order to, you know, we heard people call in tonight, you know, with medical issues and, you know, citing the hospitals and et cetera, that, that could be subject to blackouts. And that's what we have, you know, the role of government, and this is my new mantra, the role of government is to make the lives of people better. And this is a tough decision, and I know that we're not going to please all the people. There is, there, you know, but we have to make a decision for all the people, not just for some, but for all the people, for all 200,000 people that live in this city. And as far as I'm concerned, this is the, the best pathway to keep us in the interim while we're working towards 100% renewables. Remember, I wanted it in 2030, not 2035, but we're, we're moving towards it. And now we've got, we've got consensus from our staff that they're going to work harder. They, they understand that, that some of the council members didn't think that they were working hard enough or doing enough, and now they know. And so I, I feel that this is the pathway, and, and I would agree with four, three or four, whichever is, whichever we agree on.
So in terms of what we need, the biggest obstacle that we are facing, from all these presentations that have been made, and all of the very valid and, I think, good points that have been raised by both members of the public as well as my colleagues, in, in the discussion about solar and what we can do with solar, which I, I believe in, I think that we need to do more, I've, I've stated that, and that's why I embraced the resolution when it was suggested and brought to me, and brought it, and I thank my colleagues for voting for it. One of the issues is that we are somewhat of an impasse, in that we are on the hook for a certain amount of energy that we must provide in critical situations, which I don't necessarily agree with. I don't know why Los Angeles is not happy with us. I'd be interested in sitting down with the city manager and with those who, without violating the Brown Act, I'd like a briefing on what transpired at that meeting. But I can tell you, I certainly am not happy with Los Angeles, and I think we need to, I don't like pointing the finger at someone else, but I think it's a little unfair for people in Los Angeles, especially those in elected office, to puff their chests out and, and say the rhetoric that they think will get them the headlines about being sustainable, environmental, but then when the neighboring city is in need of an adjustment in this agreement that would allow us off the hook from doing more harm than saying that they're not happy with us. So I don't know the details of it, and quite honestly, if anyone is watching this, if anyone is sitting here, and a lot of this is going over your head, and it's a little high level, you're not alone. I'm right there with you. This is not what I went to school for, it's not what I studied, it's not what I did professionally. So I'm trying to understand it just as you are. One of the things that I have managed to understand is that even when we do increase our portfolio of clean energy, very little of it is produced locally, right? We invest in projects that produce energy at a more environmentally or less harmful way, but then in order for that energy to come here, it has to come here through transmission lines. And those transmission lines, if you were to think of them as freeways, are at near capacity, if not already at capacity. If, if I'm on the right track, please continue to nod your head, because I'm just trying to explain this in a way where even I understand it. In order for there to be more green energy, aside from what God gives us from up in the sky, which is what we just recently passed, we need more transmission lines coming into not just Glendale, but this entire region. That's where, if, if there's a terrible situation, we're screwed. So it's not about Glendale not doing enough, it's really about the state not doing enough and not building. So I don't know what the White House's goals are, what the federal government's goals are with these great, again, headline-grabbing plans of, we're going to allocate this much money. But our decisions would be a lot easier if we could get access to more transmission, and we don't have that. That's not to say it won't be coming. For anyone who is here remembering the Gray Davis, Governor Gray Davis era, when he was, I think, unjustly blamed for a lot of the blackouts across the state, and then, of course, the Enron scandal that came out of that, there was a lot of things that came to head, one of which was that we had not built enough power stations based on what the demand was in California, right? And then after that crisis happened, we scrambled to kind of build more, look at where we were getting more. Right now, the biggest crisis we're facing, along with our insatiable appetites for energy, but I think that's only going to increase based on requirements for electrification of new construction, based on encouraging people to drive more, not only encouraging elect, people to drive more electrical vehicles, the governor has said that we will no longer sell gas-powered vehicles in California. I think all of that is going to come to a head, and I don't know how we bridge that gap between where we are now and where we want to be. I'm, I, I am inclined to support what my colleagues may suggest. I would like to see them put forth a motion. It's not something that I'm entirely happy with, but I don't know what else I, as one councilperson, or even the five of my colleagues collectively, can do to make the situation better than what we're trying to do. We've tried to, I don't want to use the term poke holes, but we have prodded and probed and pushed back every step of the way, and we will continue to do so. And I think that there is something to be said about healthy skepticism on this dais, especially when in the past, I think, staff marched down the road of full repowering with everything, and then some, under this banner of it's absolutely necessary, and then kind of recanted and retracted from that. But we have also an obligation that I would like us to see move forward with while we also pursue other avenues of providing cleaner energy. And, you know, we're, we're doing our best. I mean, we just, I don't know if any of our neighboring cities will have an electric bus fleet before we do, right? But, you know, no one's going to do a story on that, no, we won't get the credit for that. We're doing what we can. Councilmember Brotman, you seem to have an idea of what you want to propose, and since you moved the last items on this as you were kind of cleaning or clearing the deck, is there an idea of where, what you would like to suggest and see where it lands?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we approve a Wartzilla Phase II Limited Notice to Proceed contract with, with the engineering based on a three-unit configuration.
May I?
Councilmember Saadri.
I want to be able to make this decision with my council. I have the need to see the information from the RFPs. My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, if it's going to make a difference for you whether or not we make this decision on this part tonight or early October.
So the limited notice to proceed money or the pricing, it, it's good until August 29th? So if it's something after August 29th, it'd be new pricing, and then there would be time delay.
What does that mean?
That means that there's, if it's, if we're going to do, wait for two months, then they start engineering.
Two months after.
Two months after. Plus, then they would have to actually price, price the LNTP again, so there would be some delay.
Okay. Again, I'm, oh, go ahead, sorry. I'm asking for my council to consider coming in October. I'm, I'm stating this again. I, it is not that I'm opposed to it, I want to be able to look at the big picture before we make a decision. Us choosing to go with three without knowing what the entire portfolio looks like, I'm not comfortable with, and again, if it's not going to make a difference, then I would prefer that we, we, again, we've, we've talked about this, we've reviewed it, I want to be able to see the RFPs, and I want to be able to see the money that's out there between now and October.
Councilmember Saadri, I appreciate that, I appreciate that. I think that, before I turn it over to Councilmember Divine and to Brotman, I, I understand and I appreciate the position that you're in, it's not an easy one, just as difficult is the position we're in, where when we have waited to see, it has made the difference of tens of millions of dollars in what it would have cost us to get to where we could have been, for instance, had we penned the deal and moved at the time with a virtual power plant. At the time, we got a little gun-shy, the, the economy and the situation we're in nationally and globally is very volatile and continues to be volatile. I think that's where you're seeing the rest of the council's concerns and consternation emanating from. That's not to say that your concerns are not valid as well, but I think that we are feeling the sting of having, of, I don't want to call it buyer's remorse, not buyer's remorse, whatever the opposite of buyer's remorse is, I guess FOMO is what the young people would call it nowadays, fear of, fear of missing out. And it's more than fear, it's, it's a crisis once we miss out. Councilmember Brotman, and then Councilmember Divine.
Yeah, I was just going to say, just to clarify, we're not deciding on the number of Wartzilla engines today, we're not approving the purchase of the Wartzilla engines. What we're saying is, we want to go ahead with the engineering work. Because time is of the essence, we really are running out of time. The staff proposal was to design the, was to do the engineering on the basis of the five-unit configuration, and that is what we instructed staff to do back in March. We instructed them to, to, to move the project forward so we're not losing time, and that was the, the proposal that was extant at that time, five engines. So what we'd be saying today is, five is not, is not happening, five is not in the cards, so let's not design for five. That we know is a waste of money. What is more likely? I think three is a likely place we're going to land. Maybe we'll find we can get to two based on the RFP. I'm skeptical, but let's see. But what that would mean is, we're designing for three, and if in three months from now we find, you know, lo and behold, we really can go to two, then we can redo some of that work. It is going to cost extra money, but what I'm saying is, let's do the work around a number that is the most likely outcome and minimize the chance that we're going to have to redesign and spend a lot of additional. to redesign and spend a lot of additional money. I, I do think that we could wait another two or three months to start that engineering work. That's another two and three, two or three months that we're, we're behind, we're already way behind. I am worried. I am worried. So that would be my, my, my strong recommendation, and my plea to all my colleagues would be, let's, let's move the project forward, skinny it down to three. We can still hope to, to reduce that, depending on what we see in the RFP, but let's, let's move.
I'll second the motion.
Councilmember Devine, is that all you want to say?
Yes.
All right. Yes, you may.
Are we, so if, if we agree on three, and we move forward with number three, but we agree on three engines, come a couple of months from now, it's two, or it's one, or it's four, how much is, how much more is it going to cost us to, to switch that out?
I don't know.
I wouldn't be able to tell you that. Sorry.
Councilmember, unfortunately, Asatrian, that's a difficult question to answer because it takes, it takes negotiations with the engineers and manufacturers of these engines. It's, it's not a simple math, unfortunately, so I don't think we'll be able to give you a straight answer. The best we can say is, it will cost extra, like Councilmember Brotman mentioned. If it means going from three to four, or going from three to two, either way, it's going to cost more. So at best, for us, as direction, would be to precise, as to precise number of engines this council is comfortable with, so that we can fix the price for engineering work.
I know that for me, if I, you know, three is the most I would be comfortable with. Of course, I would love to be at two. I don't think there's a path to being below that. I honestly don't think so. So that's kind of where I am. Anyway, that's my, that's my proposal.
So you making, you made a motion, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Okay, and it was seconded. I will allow Councilmember Najarian.
Yeah, just briefly. I mean, three, three is the least that I would be comfortable with. I would be more satisfied with four, but I can do three as long as we don't lose any of these, these resources, except the one that says five Wartzillas on there. I mean, if Elon says, sorry, we're going to cut you off, or Magnolia says whatever, I could go with the three.
All right.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, you may.
In order for us to actually decide, we would have to then move number nine, right? An amended version of number nine.
No, I'm saying we, we, we don't act on number nine.
Mayor Kasakian, Member City Council, that optional motion at number nine was for the purchase of Wartzilla engines. So the motion on the table right now is for number two, modified number two, I believe.
Number three. Number three.
Number three, yes.
So just number three.
Right. And, and then the resolution of appropriation, I assume.
Where are you on number nine?
On number nine, I don't want to make a decision. I want to wait till we get the results of the RFP before making a final decision on the procurement.
Is an act kicking the can down the road?
Well, I, I believe that if we have the LNTP, I think that they can work in conjunction. It's like a 15-month turnaround on the engineering component, so I think that there is a little bit of time, and I think when we talked about it in March, we indicated that December was the cutoff of procuring the engines without having to compromise the integrity of the timeline. So I think we have a little bit of time, as long as the engineering work is starting to get done because of the complexity of the engineering work.
I mean, I will add, it does add complexity to the bond financing process, for sure. If you don't know if you're buying the engines, you're still in the two, the world of two different bond financings, but that's, I'll just put that out there.
Well, the Inflation Reduction Act is going to lower inflation, so we don't have to worry about the bonds, right?
Looks like we have a motion and a second, and let's have our call.
I'm sorry, Mayor Kasakian, was there an amended motion by Councilmember Najarian? Or added to Councilmember Brotman's motion?
I wasn't going to go to four.
No, no, I meant, the motion, original motion was for three, but your amendment was to, as long as we maintain the resources.
I'll stick with three, as long as these resources remain as presented.
Well, that's not part of my motion. I, let's just, I mean, that's, that's a more complicated.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, we've got to go ahead with the engineering. We can't say, as long as those, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what future decisions we're going to make. We don't know, you know, what might happen in the marketplace. Let's just start working on this project.
Well, I guess it's just a statement of intent.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Asatrian?
No.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes.
There is an item at, item seven, the resolution of appropriation, which we need to pay for all the stuff that you just approved. So we could get a motion on that.
I'll move by seven.
It doesn't pay, it doesn't relate to the purchases.
All right, motion as made by Councilmember Devine, seconded by Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Epstein.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. All right, next is oral communications.
Yes, we have one speaker card and one person on, on call.
All right, the person who's been here and has stayed through the entire evening. I wish I had something I could offer you, a cup of coffee, a toaster, I don't know, you win the prize for staying until 11:00. Stephen Meek, please come forward. And on a very interesting idea, very worthy idea, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Several years ago, I went on a tour of the city with economic development, and I was asked to come up with ideas for improving the alleys in Glendale. I recently returned from a trip to see family and a reunion, et cetera, and I found, that you will find on your pieces of paper, my hometown of 16,000 people came up with an idea for an art alley. They put up a nice little Art Nouveau arch, and they printed local artists on vinyl and put it in the alley. It became a very clean alley. The teenagers would go there for their prom pictures, wedding couples would go there, tourists like myself went there just to get pictures. There's a couple of pictures there of the alley. They changed the art out every few months. I thought it would be an excellent idea for our city to consider doing something like that in places like the Chess Park or across the, kind of the Dumpling House, that has a big wall next to them, maybe even across from the Mona Gallery on the wall there, and other alleys that we have here in Glendale. I just wanted to try and bring it to your attention, and hopefully you can think about moving it forward. If you have any questions, I'll answer. Otherwise, you guys can get out of here.
Councilmember Devine.
Yeah, I just want to say, Stephen, maybe you should be on the Arts and Culture Commission. That's a great idea. Thank you for bringing this to us.
If I may, there is one other item I wanted to mention. My hometown also did a bike rack that is shaped like a diamond.
I love that idea.
It's a very simple design that we could put all over Glendale, the jewel city.
Yeah, I thought that was great, too.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Stephen Meek. That was a great suggestion from our Parks Commissioner. And let's go to the caller.
Yes, we have Herbert Malano on air. You have five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Kasakian, I'm a member of the City Council. My name is Herbert Malano. Well, now that the Pension Review Committee's final report has been noted and filed, I'd like to encourage the city council to take the next urgent steps and maybe invest in some arms-length evaluation of what the city should do to address the $640 million unfunded burden, plus the roughly $300 million the city has already paid in excess fees in the past 20 years for pension payments. You know, so now we have a $1 billion negative impact on the city's finances. CalPERS pushed for pension benefit enhancements that resulted in multimillion-dollar pension benefits to each of many employees, who themselves did not contribute an adequate contribution towards those enhanced benefits. Worse still, the investment returns since 2001 yielded 33% less than promoted by CalPERS to push for that pension change. I suggested the city contract out with the Rand Corporation to evaluate the pension system such, such a realization would truly put the best and most knowledgeable minds to this task. The pensions I just covered with the dismal investment returns have resulted in an obligation of about $10,000 for every household in Glendale, and now is the single largest burden on the city's budget. That $640 million unfunded debt documented in the financial reports last year, if resolved, could be put to good use on initiatives towards climate change and sustainable energy for Glendale residents, for example. But if it took $1 million to help reduce that debt of $640 million, I would say it's a prudent risk worth taking. I would also suggest that a similar amount be considered for the purposes of retaining a top legal firm to take a close look at the potential legal action for fraud initiated by the pension system CalPERS. Even if there is a 10% chance of success, if it were to save the city $100 million, it is in my mind a small risk for a huge potential benefit. That's about the cost of subsidizing about 7,000 homes for solar energy. If the city were to get a settlement of $500 million, we could have one-third of all homes in solar and clean energy in a few years. Would you not risk $5 for the purposes of getting $500? The potential benefit is worth the risk. The pension obligation is getting worse every month. It really constrained the city's ability to provide the residents of Glendale with the services they need. Given the dismal performance of CalPERS investments in the past year, shouldn't the city look deeply into resolving this growing financial problem while being guided by one of the best 10 tanks in the nation, or a top legal firm? The task of defining the best course of action could also be accomplished by getting a opinion from several sources. I suggest hiring one of the big four companies, you know, Deloitte, KPMG, Andre Young, Pricewaterhouse. Getting separate opinions from the Rand Corporation and Deloitte, for example, would give the city council a fresh and unbiased assessment of the next steps to tackle that huge unfunded obligation. And since I also suggest contracting with a major legal firm, I would say that taking legal action against the pension system is maybe a worthwhile endeavor. Take the steps to confront CalPERS pension problem head-on and think of the potential benefits to the public. The policy CalPERS promoted with what truly looks like false and misleading information is a huge opening to recruit those losses based on fraud. CalPERS, not, is not a real powerful entity free of accountability, as others have touted it to you as if they were untouchable. Last year, CalPERS agreed to a $2.7 billion settlement on a different matter, so they can lose. I suggest a unilateral lawsuit to recruit the losses CalPERS have caused. I'm strongly against a class-action lawsuit by joining with other cities. Going alone will give a greater chance of success for a settlement, but not involving other cities. Justice can prevail, and CalPERS should be held accountable. The beneficiaries can all be the residents and the stakeholders of Glendale, whose quality of life is your primary obligation. Thank you.
Next caller.
Thank you. The next caller is Edwin. You're on air. You have five minutes.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
A little tired, kind of want to go home, but you have five minutes.
Edwin, what are you doing up this late?
I'm, I'm used to staying up late because I do work and do other stuff. Anyways, I was calling because I have a couple of things I wanted to say. I would like to see if the city of Glendale, you guys, Councilmembers, can pass a similar ordinance that the city of Los Angeles passed. They passed an ordinance where it says that homeless people cannot set up camp live or sit on the public right-of-way sidewalk within 500 feet of a school or a daycare. Man, you're not going to believe how, how much of a chaos it was because the homeless advocates and the supporters erupted in disappointment that the city of Los Angeles passed that ordinance. And they did the right thing, because nobody wants to see a homeless person doing drugs right in front of kids. That's unacceptable. The good thing about Governor Newsom right now is that he's finally talking about water recycling program, like last meeting that I spoke about it, and I mentioned something about toilets at half. But I would like to say that I'm a big fan of Governor Newsom's water desalination plant. And the good thing about LA County is we're not landlocked, because we have access to the ocean, but we don't have a water desalination plant. The last thing I'd like to say is that regarding George Gascon, just found out the news that the LA County Register's office came back and said that you guys do not have the threshold met to trigger a recall to be put on the ballot, because most of the signatures were deemed invalid, so we have to start another recall again, which is a total bummer, because I was waiting for that threshold to be met, because right now, I'm disappointed because I can't pop champagne open and enjoy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any more callers? If there aren't, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of our friend, Mr. Ojoean, and the victims of the blast, the explosion in Yerevan. Councilmember Devine, did you want to add something?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the Kajayan family has requested that in lieu of flowers, that contributions, donations be made to the ARS for needy families. So with that, I will second.
Well, is there, you made the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.